All right, welcome to the Select Board meeting, November 7th, 6:30. And we'll start as usual with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dave Hemmway, Chair of the Select Board.
Normandy Blake, Select Person.
Marlo Harris, Select Person.
All right, and do we have any announcements?
We have, uh, one announcement would be, um...
Yes, because you've got things to do, right?
Yeah. We're closed on Friday for Bethune's Day.
Mm-hmm.
Steve. Oh, is that one of those notes?
Yeah. That we had.
Yeah, yeah, that was already there.
Yeah, that was already there, so, um, that has happened. And also, this is for the Select Board, um, here is an up-and-coming bestseller for the town.
Oh!
It's a code book. I still have some things to put in, but anyway, this is kind of what I envision it to look like.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I have the...
It's still looking a little thin there, yeah.
Well, you only have so many codes and, you know...
Oh, it's codes, not, it's not the policies.
It's not the policy.
I'm sorry, I was confused, sorry.
Right. Anyway.
That one will be a little thick.
I was gonna say, I was like, wow.
So that is, um... I'm excited to say, coming along.
Very good.
Finally. That's all I can.
All right, any other announcements?
No, no one, none for me. A little, little power outage, little tree down, little fire, I think that's why Chief just said...
Did I understand that Chief couldn't?
Yes, it sounds...
Because of some problem?
Well, yes, I, I don't know if it's the same problem, but I had to be turned around and...
Maybe.
You had lost the tree on your road, did you?
No, on 127.
127, there was a tree that fell on the power lines.
Yeah.
There's more than one.
More than one, huh?
Trees, he said trees.
Wow!
I know.
I wonder if that was the one Michelle was talking about earlier when the guy came in?
I knew of one that set itself on fire when it did, but...
Right, right.
Great, we're not gonna get, our, our house and about three others are in the dark.
Oh, well, we're, we're somewhere in the dark here. Oh, you are, you are in the dark, really?
It'd be like roughing it.
I love roughing it.
Yeah.
But, but, but I don't know if they're not, I mean, PSH has called me, but I didn't answer. Because they, they do look pretty good about checking up with you.
They are pretty good.
Yeah.
All right, uh, and of course, the big announcement that no one should need announced, come vote tomorrow.
Oh, my God.
Don't care who you're voting for, just come vote.
Because we're here all day. That's why.
You can come say hi, we'll all be here.
And there'll be no more announcements on the television, radio, uh, that's the best part, that we'll be over with after tomorrow.
That would be nice.
Yeah, I'm not feeling that that's gonna happen.
Anyway, uh, any further announcements from anybody else here? All right, so that moves us on to our first appointment, which is the continuation of the discretionary barn easement discussion. So, uh, I would say come, I guess there's more than one seat over there. Uh, you don't have to necessarily step forward, because we're fairly small here. Ross, you have given us several different documents and best practices and so on and so forth for this with guidelines. Do you have a best, uh, like, way to run through this, or...
But that's up to the board, so I gave you the guidelines with the steps, and that's basically what I have. I know this has been done once before, um, and renewed, so I talked to Trace about it, so that one, that was done very obviously, was renewed three years ago, so it's still active. And the only thing I could not find was the agreement between the town and the barn owner from previously. So my suggestion, if you do an agreement this time, that we record it with the application, so that way it's preserved, and we don't have to worry about that. But that's really the only advice I can give on this.
For the pre-existing, uh, property?
Yep.
Who is managing the easement?
Well, good question. I can't find the agreement, so I don't know.
Ah, okay, so we don't even have an easement document?
I think, the document says the assessors are the ones doing it, but without the actual agreement, I don't know.
We don't even have a copy of the agreement?
It wasn't in the property file, I checked there, and I also checked to see if it was recorded at the Registry of Deeds, it's not recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And I asked Trace about it today to see if she saw it when she renewed it, she's like, she also wasn't able to find it when she renewed it.
Huh, that's weird.
The easement is recorded, is that right?
No, the application's recorded, the signed and approved application.
Yeah, okay.
But the actual agreement part of it, for what this, the board agrees to do, and what the applicant agrees to do, is not with it, so that's why I'm saying...
Are you sure there's even one?
Yeah. It says in the application that there is one.
Oh, that's, okay, that's what you just said, okay, sorry. I was just thinking about everything we've been talking about, and I wondered if, you know, because it is kind of...
It's hard to know sometimes.
Lucy, loosey in a sense, but, you know, the, the main focus here is somebody to, you know, make sure that they, you know, preserve their barn, which is...
Right, but there should be some form of agreement between the owner and the town.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, dictating that, how much...
Chris Shadler, Tyler Road, the, you're talking about when the Van Loons owned the property?
No, a, a, a different barn that has gone through this process.
Oh, a different barn, oh, oh, sorry.
Currently has an easement.
Got it.
I have to thank the, it was a nice barn tour, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I enjoyed it, wish I had a barn like that.
Thank you for setting it up, I'm, I'm sorry I was unable to make it, but, uh, due to illness at the time, that could possibly have been COVID, I didn't want to...
Thank you.
...spread anything. Thankfully, it wasn't, and I'm fine, but, uh, in any case, um, all right, so, I guess we just go forward with the guidelines and try to make some decisions there. So, under the guidelines, and this is from the packet that we had a month ago.
Right.
In deciding whether to accept a discretionary preservation easement, RSA 79D3 establishes that the local governing body of the municipality shall determine whether the structure provides at least one of the following public benefits. And this is where previously, we, uh, I was at least under the incorrect assumption that it was, they apply towards one, but that's not the case. Uh, so, one, their scenic enjoyment of the structure by the general public from a public way and from public wa, or from public waters. Two, it is historically important at a local, regional, state, or national level, either independently or within a historic district. Or, three, the structure's physical and aesthetic features contribute to the historic or cultural integrity of the property listed on and/or determined eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places, State Register of Historic Places, or in a locally designated historic district. In addition, the law states that determining, uh, whether a historic agricultural structure demonstrates the necessary public benefits, the local governing body shall have reference to guidelines adopted by the advisory committee, those are outlined in attachment two, which we hopefully still have from last time. The first portion of that is just, what are these things in a barn, that was clearly part of that. And then, into the guidelines, uh, before I go down that, do you have any questions or comments on, uh, the way that we are preparing to go through this?
I don't know.
Okay. I apologize, I haven't done one of these before. So, for public interest and benefit, that says, the questions to look at are, is it familiar local landmark? Is it visible from a public road or public waters? And to what extent does it contribute to the scenic qualities of the community and region benefiting local residents, visitors, visitors and tourism? Then, is there interest or support for the structure's preservation? For example, owners and family, maintenance efforts and a commitment to preservation, structurally surveyed by historic society, including a town preservation plan or historic district, offers of volunteer help with physical repairs, letters of support, the support from local heritage commission or historic society. So, before I go on from that, the next section is historic and agricultural significance, um, we...
But I think, I think, I, I don't know how you want to do this, if you want to go through this whole thing, but I think, um, the historic society would... I, I'm, 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 right, you're from the historic, no.
Library.
Library, is anybody, nobody's from the historic society?
Not that's with us, but we do have, um, Mr. Garvin from the state, um...
And he was there at that meeting.
Yes, he was.
He came, yeah, and he did do a report on that, and I believe, I'm sorry, I wasn't there either, so, but, members of the historical society, I think.
They were, yes, and then the amount of, you know, well, the, the...
Yeah.
Interest in it seemed pretty, quite great, you know, there was, what, four or five of them from there? Along with us, and, um, so, you know, and the histories, the history's definitely there. The amount of, you know, them working on keeping it preserved, has a great roof line, you know, just things that I would look forward to something that where you're gonna keep a barn, um, restored and there, and not, you know, tear it down because you're gonna sell it off for the beams, or, you know what I mean, that type of situation, which I feel like, as a town, we should be saying is, is a good thing. I might not use the right language, but, I mean, I, I'm very much in support of it, I think it's a great... It, it creates the people, I mean, they're not gonna get that much off it, I mean, for what it costs to restore a barn or even maintain a barn, I can say myself, um, restoring a late, you know, 1700s barn, um, they've, they've kept it and they've done a great job keeping it so that it's not, I mean, the last thing we want to do, and, and I think that's what the state's going for is, you know, is it, to the view, to the eye, you know, nobody wants to drive by and see the barn falling in. Now, their tax credit they're gonna get, does that gonna mean that, that pays for what they need to keep it standing? No, not even close, but it feels like it's the little about that we can do as a town to support that, um, you know, just, I, I use the example, and, and somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, um, conservation land. I mean, think of the people that have property that they can put conservation, and they pay literally nothing for, for, for land tax on it, to a town, right? And to me, this is, it, it's a lot less, but it's along that same lines. Why is there con, why is there a conservation easement? Why does a town give people, you know, such a break on their taxes? Well, it's to preserve the land for the people.
Yeah, it's all preservation of one form or another.
Right, and that's what it feels like, that's what, you know, because it, to wrap your arms around all this, it's, it can be a little, a little crazy, but I feel like that's what it's, that's what it's all about, um, they're having to go through the loops and the hoops for really not much money back. It may be a pride thing to some degree, I, I don't know, but...
So the one thing I'll say about that is, regardless of how we feel about it and how we come out of this in the end, whether there is or is not an easement. The process that's, uh, been shown to us is something that we would need to go through and justify for being able to give that easement. And if we did not, there could be, uh, grounds for other residents to complain, bring legal action, et cetera. So you always have to go through the due diligence process to justify it.
And that's, and that's, and that's fine, I wasn't really stomping you, I just wanted to put my opinion in that they hit what, what we've been just talking about, in my, in my, in my opinion.
Is it a familiar local landmark? I think for most people, the answer there is probably yes. The second part is, is it visible from public roads or from public waters? The, it certainly is, and part of the question that I had had the, the month ago was, you know, is it a part that lots of people go on versus they're turning a corner and don't look down the street at it? And clearly, the answer that came back last month was, yeah, lots of people go there, lots of people see it, lots of people know about it. So it's not a, it's not like it's hidden in any manner. And then, is there interest or support for the structure's preservation? And they have mentioned that they want to preserve it, um, and then from the historic society, et cetera, we have, uh, both from the historic society's representative, uh, who works with the state as well, um, his letter of, I would call it support, but I think it's more finding, um, to say that, yes, it is actually historic. And then, the work that they had done as well with their historic folks, uh, previous that they presented to us a month ago. So, for public interest benefit, that kind of goes down through, like, those are certainly the points that we saw there. Then the next section is that historic and agricultural significance. Does it tell the story, uh, is it a good representation of this type of barn? Is there something rare or unusual, or is it a good example of historic construction methods and materials? It, does it still retain its historic character? And is it part of the landscape or setting that retains its historic character? And from the report that we got, uh, the answer to all of those is yes.
Yes, right, yeah, and I would agree 100%.
So, then, the next section is the degree to which tax relief will help preserve the structure. So we're to consider the use and condition of the structure, and what the expected owner's investment over time will be, the plans for repair or renovation going forward, the owner's use of plans for preservation tools such as conservation easements, investment tax credits, local, national, historic register listings, et cetera. So, the... They've obviously done a lot of work to it already. So the question, the first question, I think, would be, uh, to you, what do you see as still left to do to redo any restoration? And/or what do you expect you'll need to continue to do?
Well, we have three very large trees that, um, we need to remove immediately, because they're hanging over the roof, and we've already had large branches fall on the roof, so we need to do that. There's three windows, one kind of large, that needs to be replaced, that they're just missing. That's immediate, we have some floor joists that have holes or have rotted, we have to change that.
Some stonework to the foundation.
That has to be done immedi, well, immediately, and, um, we...
And whatever basic, I mean, if something breaks, I fix it.
Yeah, we fix it.
So I don't have, I don't have...
We did all the electric, we ran all new electric in it, so it's kind of hard, because we didn't know about this.
If I get a hole in the roof, I'm fixing the roof.
Yeah.
Like, if, if a board comes down, I'm replacing the board, I don't have a, you know, I can't give you the, the, the...
Well, uh, yeah, obviously, there's the general, like, yeah...
And even the actual structure underneath, there's some rotten, as we saw. I mean, that, that excel, excess, that, that's very expensive to do, um, you know, and the stonework and everything, so, I can't see that they don't totally meet that, in my opinion.
Okay.
Now, are we planning to, um, write something with the owners, the property, the town, and instead of like, whatever happened before, we have no paperwork, don't you think we need paperwork?
Correct, yes.
And you're, you're, you're okay with it, like, we can do some paperwork?
Yeah, I mean, like, is it gonna say, within the next two months, we have to fix the window, I mean...
No.
No, I think we're a little leashed.
For now, we're doing a lot of work, so... And I think we have to kind of somewhat, I mean, granted, I think we're trying to establish here, but there's, we already have, you know, we gotta do a little bit more research on what needs to happen when they renew theirs, but, and it's good to set some guidelines, but, um, I think...
I mean, this is like your permission to inspect once a year to make sure that it's not falling apart. You know, the agree to keep the barn in a certain condition, and the amount you're granting in the easement. And these are things that both parties can sort of negotiate and agree upon, and then draft the easement after that, both parties sign off on it, and then we record it with the application. That's kind of how I was thinking in my head.
I have a question now, I hope these people are gonna stay here for a long time, but now, with, whatever we sign with these people would not carry forward if some new owners, or, or would it?
It would.
It would.
It would.
Yeah.
Why would that be different than like our solar credit? Our solar credit ceased when the Van Loons sold, and now we have to reapply for the whole...
So the, the difference is that the solar credit is a, uh...
Credit.
Personal credit towards your taxes, and instead of being a deed which is again, or as to say, an easement which is against your deeds.
Okay.
So, and you're really growing in the same direction, I mean, what you want is what they want as well.
I'm guessing, you have an option, um, as far as a tax credit between 25% of the assessed value to 75%? So you're talking roughly between $300 and $800.
That's just on the assessed on the barn, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so only the current tax rate.
So, I mean, they can spend that very easily, I'm sure.
Oh, yes, I'm sure, I'm sure $800 will repair lots of things in today's economy.
Yeah, right, over 20 years maybe.
So that basically brings us through the, um, that section, oh, the, there is one last section, which is use of the structure. And I think it was you that brought this up last month, when we started this, which is, um, the, the type and continuing use of the structure, like the apartment, for example, would, if, let's say that there was an apartment in a barn, or they were converting it to be able to use, like, as a dance hall or a restaurant or something, not saying you are. But if they were to be doing that, this couldn't cover any of that.
Yeah, right, right, yes.
Right, but we did subtract the square footage of that, and it's not an accessory apartment anymore, it's just kind of like someone's collection of...
But, but again, just, just pointing out that we've, we've already looked at that.
I think you said a sink or toilet.
There's a toilet, there's a toilet.
Oh.
That we don't know where it goes, but there's a toilet. That might be a priority.
And, and another section, is it still being used for agricultural purposes? And if it's going to be adapted, has the historic structure and character been maintained? And in all of these cases, I mean, it's not technically still agricultural use right now, but the way that you're restoring it, it certainly could be, um, so, I don't personally see any problem with that.
It was a beautiful, it's a beautiful barn, I have to say, wish I had one like it, but...
There was also, um, not listed as a specific point, but in, uh, support of this, was degree to which the building's preservation or reinforcement of other local, state goals, policies, et cetera. And, uh, it was, uh, last month, somebody mentioned, and I believe Russ pulled it out and sent it to us, was in the master, was it the master plan?
Yep.
That mentioned it as a...
Historical barn.
Historical point, uh, of reference, so we have support for that, in that manner as well. So that leaves the two main questions that I would see being left, which it has now ended, so it doesn't really tell us what to deal with. The first being the 25 to 75%, and the second being, um, that generally, there would be some sort of maintenance plan or guarantee or whatever that would be then associated with that easement to, to put onto the deed.
So what is it, but we don't know the examples, we don't have it from the other one. Just answered my own, I keep going back to, and it's kind of new and, and we want to be fair to how we do it, and, um...
We, we do have the percentage from the previous one?
I think it was the full 75 on the previous one.
What was that?
I think it was the full 75 on the other one.
Really?
Yeah, well, it's assessed at like 1800, and now it's like less than 1000, so I'm assuming that's pretty much all of it.
So, my suggestion, because I like to try to be logical, um, is that there are three suggested possible reasons that you would get this. One is the scenic enjoyment in public, one is the historically important, and the other is, uh, cultural, historic integrity, et cetera. And being that it's 25 to 75%, if each one of those are worth 25%, then they would get the maximum 75%. I'm completely open to any other thoughts on how that would go, or what you're thinking.
I'm fine with the, I mean, like you said, it hits all three, I'm fine with the 75%.
I think we need a barn dance over there.
That's not allowed.
Right, right.
You'd get me in trouble already.
That's probably historically accurate at some point.
Absolutely, and enjoyment, yeah.
Anyway, um...
So do we make a vote?
How do, yeah, are we supposed to make a motion now, do we then just, or do we make an agreement that this is what we want to do, and then have the, how it gets written up?
On the signed agreement.
Yeah, I think if you make a contingent on a signed agreement, and then Russ can work with the presidents and, and kind of come up with, um, something in writing that, and Stephanie's already told us what they plan to do, but maybe get that in writing. I don't see that you need much more than that.
Okay, we might want some, I don't know, the legal ramifications of the easement, or how to draft an easement.
Yeah, I think we're gonna need to have that portion as well, so it's what we're, what we are on the hook to have to go do, what we're supposed to do with that, and then the...
Yeah, well, I think that's probably outlined in 79.
At least to some degree.
To some degree, and I think that's as good as you're gonna get, um, but...
I mean, I can work on the conditions.
We're kind of making that historical situation right now.
Yes, yes.
So, so...
We are making precedents by not making precedents.
I mean, to some degree, I thank them, because it's a lot of stuff to go through for not a lot of money. Would, would the town also help us, once we contacted the historic, uh, the Register of Historic Barns and have it placed on the Register of Historic Barns, would, would you help us get any paperwork or information that they would need, so we can get it registered?
I would think so.
If, if we have any documents for that, that can support it, you can certainly ask.
Yeah, I don't know what they're gonna ask for, we're in preliminary discussions with them, but, um, we'd like to get it registered as a historic landmark.
Do you, and all that paperwork you had from, um, Van Loons or anything?
It's never, no one's ever pursued it.
No, no.
And we're kind of like big into that, that's what I did at my old historical society, and we got plaques and stuff, and s, singled, singled out historic landmarks in the town.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I think that's awesome, so, I'm sure we would do anything to help.
Okay.
To do that, right, I mean...
If I have it, they, they can have it, it's not an issue.
Yeah, yes.
Maybe the historic society should be...
Oh, yeah, we are working with them already.
Well, that should be the organization, I think, that would, that could help them so much get, go through that.
I would think so, um, and, and they've already been talking with, been working with them at least to some degree. So, yeah, it's, it's not that the, the town is not going to help you go get that, but if there's any documentation that the town might have to support it, absolutely.
That's what, yeah, yeah.
All right, uh, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to, well, how did you want to say? We're gonna do the 75%, um, because they hit the, what, what we feel is criteria. And so we make a motion for that, to move forward, to get the right documentation and the plan written. What am I missing? Am I doing all right?
Yeah, you got that.
To move forward, to get the tax credit.
So, I believe your motion is to accept their application, approve for 75%, contingent upon the, uh, management plan and, uh, appropriate deed and easement paperwork.
Yes, yep, that sounds good, I'm gonna second that.
I know, I'm just kidding, I, I kind of said that.
So I will second that. So I will second that. All right, uh, any further questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you for doing all this. I mean, it's it's a good thing.
I'm sorry it took so long, but uh in the end we got there. All right.
Well, it was a nice barn tour anyway. I enjoyed it. It was good. And your house, it looks great inside. I like your ideas.
And when Dee's happy, we're all happy. I know, she made that clear.
All right, so that moves us on to department head reports.
Well, it seems we.
They might be a little busy tonight.
It seems we don't. Uh, Steve did give you uh the police department and report, which is kind of the the normal um report.
Yes.
He's broken down his budget and how many arrests and and uh he talks about the Halloween trip.
So he mentioned seventeen percent remaining in the budget.
Yeah.
Uh, three arrests total this uh month. And that uh the trunk uh trunk or treat or the trucker treat uh went off great and they had lots of people that showed up.
And I am going to compliment them because we had a little incident. We live on a dead end road and my my daughter says, Mom, and she's nineteen. There's somebody in a Vermont car following me up our road into our yard, which we're, like I said, a dead end road. And uh I made one quick call and they were, me and my husband were at dinner, but they were there within five minutes and. You know, and everything's, you know, granted, it's just awesome. I think we're very, very, very fortunate and they have great coverage and. You know, we don't have to use them very often, but when you do, boy.
You want them there. That's right.
That was nice.
I'll second that. We had someone take off. We had an incident where we hired a contractor and paid him nine thousand dollars and he vamused.
Oh.
Lovely. And the police department was at our house maybe every two or three days and asking how we were doing and came by and I'll second that.
Did they catch him?
No, got our money back, but.
Oh, well, that's that's the big part.
I'll catch him.
Nice people, huh?
And I see Emma's not here, but I wanted to, um, I was hoping they'd be here because at the department head meetings, they've made suggestions on use for the ARPA money.
Yep.
And I was hoping to have people that had made the suggestions be here to talk with you about that. But I just bring, you've looked at the list that I sent you.
Can you remind everybody, what does ARPA actually stand for?
It's the American Rescue Plan Act.
And we could probably have the first. Three of those uh addressed by the wonderful lady next door if she doesn't have uh customers at a moment. If someone just walked in. But the, well, let's go ahead and move to the next ones.
And this may not be, we might not be in a hurry for this, but.
I was gonna ask, is there a timeframe on this?
No, I I just wanted you to be aware of what the department heads had come up with for for plans.
Yeah, it's it's the things they would like to use it for, basically, and we have uh. We've made made sure to make it clear that rather than, hey, I wanna put a hundred dollars or, you know, six hundred dollars or whatever on this. And here's the P O that we already ordered, um, that we would be approving use of it ahead of time.
The only thing I would like to see is a couple more quotes.
I think I think they've, again, this is.
It's kind of like a.
You know, I think if you were to give them the heads up up to pursue it further, I would agree. They they would need a few more quotes on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought the same thing when I was reading through it. Can can I ask you something? We have guests here. And do they have something special they wanna do and we can do that first before we go into the rest of this fun stuff?
I don't think there's a whole lot more on this fun stuff, but.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay. Thanks, Dee.
They'll they'll be here for, I believe, budgeting for for both of them.
Oh, okay, exactly. Okay, all right.
Um, could you leave? He's not feeling well.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. No, no, you don't have to stay.
In and out whenever you want. It's fine.
Right.
Yeah, we'll work on it.
You're going in the hospital.
You can always feel free to swing by the office and then we'll talk about it.
Thank you guys. Very much.
Thank you.
He's gonna have surgery, so he's gonna be down for a little while. Yeah.
There's no rush. We just need to get it done before.
They're taking a peacemaker out of his lung. It was experimental. It's not working. So, yeah, since fifty-nine surgery.
Ouch.
God, it looks great.
It's got great color.
Thank you.
All right.
So I didn't expect you to make any decisions on this. I just wanted you to be aware of it because um. Department heads sometimes forget that I also work for someone.
So I think I think like Dee and I were saying, and probably Dave's thinking the same thing. If this is something, is there something you see here, Dave, that you think is? Out of what you would like them to be requesting? And how do I say that? Meaning, like, do they really need that?
Um. There isn't, there isn't anything here that tell that would prompt me to say, no, we shouldn't have that. Um, the. The first item should normally have already been budgeted for and be in funds already.
That's kind of my thinking.
Uh, cause that's just normal maintenance. The second item, um. I mean, assuming that they went and got quotes, which they probably like, and so we only see one thing. And I know, for example, the third item, I know that they went and requested at least three or three to five quotes when they initially went through that. I don't know what the status of the any of them are at this point, but.
I mean, and and in that case, where that that's quite costly for a sign, I I would like to hear a little bit more of their reasoning behind.
That's why you would really need to speak with him. I mean, the sign started out at forty-two thousand dollars.
Right.
Oh, geez, got sale.
Well, and and it's also interesting in that the the sign that was the like forty-two to fifty whatever. Was actually like a full, complete sign. Whereas this one, even though it's a bunch cheaper, appears to just be an L E D text bar. So.
The other sign, they could have put messages on it. They could change the.
Yeah.
Images, all sorts of things.
Right, so so there's questions as to what makes sense and 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 that sort of thing in regards there. Um, but the the second one, which is their seal coating, et cetera. I have no problems with them saying, oh, it needs to be done and then it should be done. I don't know whether. The, it makes the most sense to do it this way, to have a a bidding or quote process or to. Just include this as part of what the road agent can normally handle because he's normally handling maintenance of all the municipal driveways.
So you wondered if that money is really appropriate in this.
Well, it can certainly, if it goes out this way, that then it would. It can certainly be appropriate to use it for that. This this is the kind of thing that those funds are for. But.
I have a question on like the seal coating. Don't we need that here and around here too?
Normally it's after a period of time.
Okay, so that that this is newer or this is old?
Yeah, so this was just done.
Right. Okay, I see, I see, okay.
Um, whereas the the seal coating is normally, once it's been there for a while, starts cracking. You kind of fill them in and then seal over the top of it.
It's to preserve it as important.
Which I'm speaking about it a little bit, but.
Well, I just, I that's what I, I I wouldn't figure that everybody would do it if it wasn't.
Right.
I mean, we don't wanna have to, to repave it would be a lot more money.
You might wanna add on to your driveway, Russ came to work last week and someone drove over the bank at the library. And came down over the.
Over the tree.
Oopsie. Well, that would have been more of a bump.
And, you know.
Did he was on purpose or you think somebody?
It was.
No, they thought it was, yeah, they thought it was an exit.
Oh, my God.
Let's guess the.
I just, I just had to sit there dumbfounded, just looking going, I can't believe that just happened.
Oh, did you witness it?
I did, I just.
Oh, the whole thing? You didn't know who did it?
I am who did it. I just got out of my car and then it happened. I was like, wow.
Oopsie.
It's a morning.
We shouldn't say this, but the man who did it was driving a company vehicle.
Somebody needed their coffee.
So I hope he told his boss because.
Well, I'm glad that I don't see anything out there, so I hope they're all safe.
I mean, I'm glad he didn't get hurt.
No, nobody got hurt.
I certainly hope that.
You're probably thinking you like to see something that's just defines that that goes over.
Well, I've asked Emmett and I'd like at the top of that to have, you know, and I know it's a pain to plow. But like you see in parking lots that stop you.
Oh, those those things, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, cause whether whether it's actually like a curb style or some posts, either one is gonna be appropriate. The curb style would also help with the runoff and the the drainage that we're supposed to be getting some information on, so.
We're trying to have it go another way.
And that could also be like the drainage and and stuff, that could also go into the ARPA type stuff. That falls under that.
Not a nice little fence?
Nice little fence.
White, white. It would look nice.
You could be statics, put a little hanging plant on it, you know, and we'd love that.
And of course, as a previous uh Black Board member can attest to, the one that's been on the to-do list forever. Replacing the the door of the town hall. I'm very happy to see that there and I know that you've been making lots of calls.
And I have a few more things as we go on, meaning to talk to you about that.
Perfect, so. The.
I don't know about the trailer, but uh Emmett was supposed to be here to explain that. I'm not exactly sure. I mean, I guess it's to put. A container for cold water, I guess.
So.
We'll have to ask him.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not, we're not in a hurry.
So far, everything is fitting in there, even if there's a little bit of a bump, uh, and these are the. At least the types of projects that should go in there.
I think the projects are very reasonable. Whether the the question is, are there other projects? You know, I think we're trying to use the ARPA money very wisely. And should some of these be budgeted for or or should we look to the trust funds for some of this? And and use ARPA for something else? And I'm just throwing that out as a comment.
We had originally decided that we were going to do. As much of white planes as we could with this, and then there was something else, but I don't remember the full details of it at this point. Uh, cause I don't see that in the list here.
Well, no, and we had talked about white planes and as you see, what we have available is ninety-seven thousand dollars. Of which a little bit of that has been already committed. And white planes is probably going to, well, the culvert itself is going to be a hundred fifty thousand dollars plus the work that goes into it. So we're probably talking close to three hundred thousand.
But don't we have some funds for each replacement?
We have, we have, we do, Dee, yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, hopefully.
Yeah, so so like with some of the others, uh, like the. Seal coating or the carpets and is being changed over in the uh police department. All of these have different funds, just like that does, so it's where do we wanna pull it all from? But I think that's a good overview. Do you either, do you have any questions or comments on it?
But more or less, more or less, the ARPA funds, some of them could go towards white planes. And what you're saying is some of this may be part of their their actual budget. And how do you?
I I guess I was just saying you could fund it from another source.
Right, 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 right. Well, okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying, mainly like. Yeah. We 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 kinda would need to know. I I mean, I would like to kinda know. What, I guess I should know, maybe, but what there is in the bridge, you know, what we have set aside for white planes as of right now.
Um, the short version to that is we had just about, we basically had enough for white planes plus closed pin bridge. Which was gonna be far more expensive.
Yeah.
And we won't be using any of that towards closed pin bridge other than to pay the engineering fees.
Because of the, yeah.
So we definitely have the funds in the fund.
We have a little over seven hundred thousand dollars, I think.
But now with closed pin bridge tied, we don't have to do anything.
Well, we. I know, it's a brand.
It looks nice, doesn't it?
A running joke. We have a brand new bridge already. If only. All right. So I think that takes care of that, uh, which moves us on to old business budget presentations and uh. Bring one of these two lovely young ladies up here first.
Oh, give me a break. Want me to go for it?
Sure, go ahead. No fighting, ladies, no fighting.
Then you told me to give it a break.
Oh, yeah. I'm like, Stan, why do I need to wait?
Thank you.
So why don't you just take a moment to to review this? And I think at the end you wanna add on another zero, cause now I know the town has seven hundred thousand dollars.
Well, as my wife would tell me when I say, wow, I didn't know we had that much money in the checking account, she'd say, well, that's earmarked for something else.
Bridges are expensive.
I'm glad you had salamanders and frogs. I've loved them since I was a little kid. My father had a pond and I was always going after them.
Little kids love them.
Oh, I still, a big kid, I still love them, so.
Especially the orange ones.
Never grew up. But they're so neat. They're just so neat.
So there's back page too.
I know.
That's what I just noticed.
She's saving paper.
Thank you. I'm saving paper. So the back page is essentially um more specific information on what we went through on the front page.
So I guess I'll start.
Well, I'll start.
Oh, sure, go for it.
So I wanted to just give you a little bit of background information on this. You know who Bob Quinn is?
I've heard the name.
So Bob Quinn is a world-class birder, ecologist, um, travel guide person. He's a treasure that we have in town. He lives on Col Road. And um he he has been on the Conservation Commission for a long time. And then I I think just before the pandemic, he dropped off and was cultivating his um. His trips to Africa and Indonesia and that kind of thing. And he showed up a couple of Conservation Commission meetings ago when we were talking about. How Webster is a little bit behind the ball right now in in looking at its natural resource inventory and figuring out. What kind of species we have, especially concerning all the invasive species that we're looking at now that are. Killing beech trees and ash trees and all of that. And so um Bob said that he wants to work with us on that. And he came what he came up with based upon what we had talked about in our meeting. A way of getting this stuff done. I think it's probably gonna take a couple of years, but he thinks he can get this done this year. With the help of the Conservation Commission. So what we would wind up with is reports from him where um we would. Finalize the wildlife section in the Natural Resources Inventory, which is gonna take a lot of groundwork, which I wish that Rich was still here, cause he's. You know, he's uh he's interested in joining the Conservation Commission and it's the wildlife aspect of that that he's interested in. Turns out that Webster has a bird atlas that goes back a hundred and fifty years, which is amazing for a town like this. Betsy Janeway has been a big part of um the data collection on that, but putting that out there. We also would very much like to. We also would very much like to have a well advertised salamander brigade. In the spring like Keene does, Keene and other towns out in the southwestern part of the state. Keene actually closes off two of their main roads that are flanked by wetlands, closes the roads down completely. And gets the kids out there at night helping salamanders and and frogs and stuff cross the road. And it has created this huge body of interest in the town among kids for conservation, which is great. So. The ask is exactly the same amount as last year, except that I wanted you to know that. This year is going to be a really ambitious year for us. So administrative costs still the same. The the Quinn proposal is two thousand. And. I'm pretty excited about it. Now that we have the Janeway boat launch, we need to brush hog it to keep it open.
Where is that?
That's across from Cozy Pond Campground.
Oh, it is. Oh, okay.
That spacious point six acre, don't say little. It's got that broad view.
Yeah.
Of the Blackwater River. So. So we are, we're trying to find people who might brush hog that for us. Also, we're trying to get a bridge built across. This the front part of the Mock Forest. Have you been down there at all to the Mock Forest?
Off one twenty seven?
When you when you park, when you park, you walk down a little way. And then you've got to leap over a little creek.
Yep.
And it's an impediment for a lot of people. And so what we're trying to do is convince a local logger. To donate a couple of good sized logs that we can lay. You know, some some beams across. What do you call them that goes across? Not Joyce, but.
Stringers.
Stringers?
Yeah.
And. And have, you know, some rope. Rope, yeah, so that.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, I mean, it would make the Mock Forest a little more accessible. And the Conservation Commission this past. Spring accompanied people from the state who came out to walk the boundaries of. The Mock Forest and look at the condition of the trails. And the signs were all upside down. Some of the signs had been removed. There's, you know.
There's no grants for that?
Pardon me?
There's no grants?
Well, there's.
Like like snowmobiling, you know, the trails, there's all kinds of grants.
Yeah, the snowmobile clubs have, they have a lot of. They've got a lot of money available to them, but for trail maintenance in a small town. It's generally the Conservation Commission and some people that we can drag along to help us. Chainsaw and clear brush and that kind of thing. So you're you're welcome to come along any old time you want. So anyway, we're waiting for an estimate on that. And then trail work, new signs, new trail maps, that kind of thing. So it's basically the same ask as last year, but with a little more.
So my question was going to be, having seen that that last item, as I'm sure you're aware, I've been rooting for trail maps forever. And I know that you had said that there was going to be work on that throughout this previous year. How has that been going at this point? What's been done, what needs to be done?
It's pretty cool. The the town has access to GIS up in Littleton, I guess, is where the people are.
That's where they do our maps, yes.
They do your maps?
Yeah.
And I think it's MJ is the one that has been. Learning, teaching herself how to work with those kinds of technologies to draw up maps. And right now we we have to make a, I think, a fairly important decision about whether we're going to approach private land holders. Who have put their land into conservation or under some kind of an easement, whether they want to open their land up publicly. As part of our trail network. And so this is sort of tender work because people have various feelings about doing that. So that's still very much in the works. We've got Riverdale done. The upper part of Mock Forest. Have you ever been up to the tip top where all the bears live? It's very exciting up there.
That sounds awesome.
It's very exciting. You go all the way up to the top and it that your daughter's land is on the other side of that.
I was just gonna ask you about that, yeah.
Yeah, so that part of the trail has to be remapped.
I know we were going by the field, the cornfield. They had to cut the corn and we kind of stopped and looked. It was Mama Bear and two babies going up to Manning's house.
Yeah, a lot of bear.
So, well, she'll love it. She'll love it. So my kids are, well, she's raised here, so. Her mother's an animal nut, so she's one too.
Right. So anyway, so they're coming along, but we've seen what other conservation commissions have been able to do. With using GIS technology and we want to, we want to try to do that.
Awesome. Having said that, one or one in part were done, where might people find?
We're working on it. This, you know, communication in this town is very, very difficult. And. I I don't know if you if you were on the board at that time, Dave, but at one point I suggested. That we have one of those electronic boards put up that we could all make announcements on those electronic boards. And I got shouted down soundly because they're not very historic looking, but.
Plus, I think they might be expensive.
It's actually one of the things that the safety building is looking to.
Wonderful.
Twenty two thousand dollars.
That would be the perfect place.
But that's not. That's not where we would put a trail map?
No, 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 no. I don't know where we, the town hall is the obvious place for a trail map and having a kiosk outside. The door here so that people don't have to come in and bother you all, you know, to get a trail map. That would be.
Well, in theory, we could just post the PDF on the website.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Oh.
Yeah, because even even we were looking up, you know, like snowmobile trails, side by side trails, you know what I mean? And each town, the state, it's through the state website, shows you.
The snowmobile trails are very well marked.
And there's.
It's a lot due to their.
A few different apps and stuff and. Behind the scenes companies and organizations like the Sierra Club actually puts out an app that is supposed to be with all the different trails. So Sierra Club might be able to help with that because they run an app that is for that sort of thing, hiking and. And and different kinds of trails. But there's at least a few different apps that do that and have backers like the Sierra Club or there's another one that I'm forgetting right now. But they're they're all designed to do this. And so they may be able to take a map and put it into an easily digital form that someone could use a GPS on their phone with.
Now, the assumption. The assumption that you're making is that there are a ton of people in town that feel comfortable. Working with that kind of technology on their phone.
And they don't. Not everybody. I agree. I agree. I agree. I agree. I think the maps are still important.
Stay on the phone.
We still go buy maps when we do things. I'm not the one on the phone. I'm I'm the one that would say, give me something I can look at and hold.
I'm the one to wander down the trail until I figure out where I have.
Well, that too.
I know my daughter Heather's husband's got every, all that land is on his phone and he can. So they're figuring out where their house is going and all that. But I know I, he showed it to me and how he can do all that stuff. I mean. I'd rather see a map myself.
Yeah, well, you know, in the far distant future, we would like to have a map kiosk in the at the trailhead of every one of the trails in town. And people can use them and then put them right back into the into the trailhead kiosk. And that that works really well in most places around the state.
Yeah, like the laminated cards. That's the the trip, the trail, right? Just a map that's laminated, basically.
Yeah, I was, I, we weren't thinking laminated because people usually stuff them into their pockets and after three or four uses, they look terrible. But it's the idea of returning to, you know. But anyway.
But that makes sense because if you're going to go up, you're going to come back to your cars.
You hope to.
Yeah, well, you hope.
The bear trail is a little challenging that way, but in the fall, after after the acorns have fallen, it's just like.
Oh, God.
Marbles coming all the way again.
But you know what? This year, there's no acorns at my house.
No, yeah, it's not in mastier.
It's like, what a disgusting, because I, last year, I almost killed myself going around to the barn and it's like, oh, my God. This year, I don't think.
See, there it has.
What are we gonna do with our front yard?
This year, I don't think I've seen two acorns. I've got a lot of oak leaves on the ground, but no acorns.
Right, it's not a mastier.
So it'll be less less chipmunks and less squirrels next year, right?
Yep, yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
So are we all set? Any questions at all?
No, you're doing a great job.
We're trying. Yeah.
This looks like a wonderful use of the funds and thank you for keeping it in the same amount of funds. I hope you get as much done as it's like you can.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need more people on your committee?
Yes.
All I expect stories from my newspaper.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll let you know. I was sick a while.
All right. So come on down, tell us what you want us to hear.
Another smiley face we need to see.
Might as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You keep me healthy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is what you have in mind.
Oh, I forgot you're the one hitting that out.
All right. Let's take a quick look at this year compared to the. That's somehow the same.
And Marty was supposed to be here. I have no idea where he is.
He left it all to you, didn't he?
Apparently.
You probably know where he lives.
They all know where he lives.
What can I say? Always see him up doing something.
Give him a call. You should have called him a call and get him down.
He's probably off doing some volunteer thing somewhere else.
Exactly, yeah, right.
Yeah, so that's where the pressure line is.
Same, right?
Most things have gone up a little bit, but not a lot. The. I mean, the main difference is that we don't have the. One time huge investment dividend.
Right.
That came in.
Last year.
I don't see that. In here as an offset and there would be some, it just wouldn't be that large.
That would be on his sheet. The one thing that we have done is, or we would like to do, let's put it that way, is add an assistant for Catherine. Libraries are a little more complicated than when I was a kid and we've added on hours for her. We added on two last year and she'd already had two added on years before that. It's just getting to be too much.
How many hours is it right now for her?
Thirty two. Wait a minute, let me think about that. Pretty close to that.
What does someone need for education to?
To be a librarian like she is?
Well, I'm just.
Or the assistant.
Oh, the assistant. Do you have to?
High school.
Oh, really?
For the assistant for for her, you have no idea how lucky we are. A, that she has a master's in library science.
Sure.
And B, she works for what she does.
Right.
Because if you go through.
And C, she wants to be here.
She wants to be here.
Sorry, I just, you know how hard that is too.
Well, Salisbury's trying to find a like part time librarian.
I know. Well, right after COVID. The beginning of the end of COVID, there was seventy five openings in New Hampshire for library directors.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, aside from the one you asked.
Yes, move on, Dave.
Yeah.
I'm, I will just make a comment that I am impressed that the cost for all of the materials, you know, like the books, the movies, et cetera, only went up four dollars. That doesn't seem possible, but I like it.
Well.
I like the hoopla.
Do you know what hoopla is?
No.
Well, the the state is the New Ha, New Hampshire downloadable books, which is also on that list. And so this is similar to it with the New Hampshire one that's run through the state library. You can download. Books and magazines and and audio. However, for the whole state of New Hampshire, they will have, Stephen King comes out with a new book, which he just did, Fairy Tales. There are two copies of it for the whole state. It's gonna be on a waiting list for the rest of your life.
Yeah.
Basically.
If you get to see it.
Right. And and it's all downloadable. So you you know, you have to do this on your computer and you only have two weeks. So you better read quickly, especially when you know his books are like that. Hoopla is completely different. It's the same idea. It's downloadable. It has movies and books and audiobooks, magazines, comic books. Pretty much everything you can think of. And it's an unlimited amount. So if if the four of you wanted to get Stephen King's newest book. It's no problem. And you have it for as long as you need it.
Wow.
Yeah.
Oh, that's.
Oh, and I think it has music too.
I'm curious about the employee, employer share FICA because it is listed as two twenty eight, but last year it was twenty four eighty. So it's an order of magnitude off. Was there a zero missed?
That is, that is again, our treasurer. That's the figure I got from him. I'll see him tomorrow. He he said he was going to talk to Wendy. I'm I'm not sure if that happened.
Conferences, though. Which makes sense. Everything's more expensive.
Well, it's, the conferences are actually stay pretty much the same. That's the trustee conference that we have in the spring. The book subscriptions are the the big professional books that she gets up there that have. Say you like, say you like reading Stephen King, which I'm sort of focused on apparently. And you read all the Stephen Kings, it will have some of the book subscriptions that she gets, then they'll say, well, if you like that one. Here are ten other authors that you might like to read. And that's kind of the idea behind the subscriptions. And of course, since they're put out by publishing, not publishing companies, but professional companies, they're very expensive.
All right, well, I guess at this point we will. Unless you have any further questions or comments. All right, I guess we will say thank you and we hope to hear back about the. Investment dividend offset and the. Questions about, for example, the the FICA and making sure that's actually accurate.
And we we are set to do the overhead projector. We talked about that at the last meeting, so we're all set to go. And he will run it by, should you oversee him, he will run it by you too.
Actually, let me ask one more question because there's there's internet listed here.
Yeah.
We have two different TDS lines coming into town hall for town hall. One of which I believe we use for data and, well, supposedly one of which we use for data. one of which I believe we use for data, and, well, supposedly, one of which we use for data and one of which we use for phones. Do you have an entire, a third line that comes in there with your own routers and everything else up there?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's available outside the library.
Yes. Yes, the one that I'm on now, for example.
Okay. That'll be four dollars.
I was gonna say that. What's he gonna be charged? That's right.
Good job.
My question there would be, since we've got so many accounts, I would wonder if there's a way that we can more appropriately manage this, so we're not paying
As much, yeah.
TDS three times for several not-quite-amazing connections, and we can actually have a good connection that we just share. So I would
I'd have to research that.
I'd like to try to figure that out, but
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
But
You have TDS phones, too, don't you?
We're, yes.
Okay, so are we?
Yeah.
But we have one phone.
Right.
But, yeah, that would be interesting.
I'll I have a connection at TDS, because he's very sick of hearing from me about all my problems, so I'll
Well, if you ever need your stuff fixed, because we had the man come, his name is Roger, and he lives either in, I think he lives in Boscombe. And he is fantastic.
Really?
Yes.
Well, a lot of times it's not the poor fix-it people, it's the
No.
the whole situation.
Back when they were trying to fix your mine out, there were three different texts that came. Two of them are no longer there, and one of them at the end was, yeah, I'm I'm just back to doing this, I used to do this ages ago, instantly fixed the whole thing.
Yeah.
He was really good.
Yeah. You're right, you get to get the bad news sometimes.
We had no phones one day, and the guy came in, and so he says, what's the problem? So we don't have any phones, and he goes, yeah, but what's the problem? If I knew, we would have
Now, do we have any other options?
Other than TDS?
Yeah.
No.
Because in Hattler, we just, because we had to take TDS in Hattler, and of course, I do, where I live here, too, but and then Comcast came in and did save us quite a bit of money, but I don't know if they run through Webster.
No. There's
They're in Hattler now.
There's one, the story goes that there's one house in Webster that's covered by Comcast, because during construction, they needed to put like a pole on the end of their land somewhere, and they said, fine, but you have to run the connection here.
Oh, good for them.
But it's like on the edge of town, so it's here, they could do a rollout and run it, they'd have to run the wires to do it, and, you know, that's expense.
Yeah, yeah, no, for years it was Yeah, you were, nope, nope.
This is stuff, it's very hard to save money with this stuff.
Right.
You just gotta grant there.
Otherwise, I mean, besides a couple of questions, there again, that's minimum, I mean. And now, how come they're not subject to any ARPA money?
Well, they had they could be, I mean, because they're part of the town. And
Yeah, they had mentioned
If you remember, Nancy came in on August fifteenth and asked you about the air conditioning. And the only issue was, it had already been done.
And paid for.
But but, and again, that's up to the board, you're in charge of the not the ARPA.
I know, I'm sorry. I stand on my my What is the ARPA money? I mean, I don't know.
The man in butterfly money, but anyway.
Yes, I can kill words.
Maybe it's more a question for Marty, but the projector that you're planning on, obviously, I don't see that listed in here.
No.
Because that's more expensive than that computer copier and equipment line.
Well, it's going to come out of our other money.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the, because the library has its own trust fund as well, right?
It'll come out of the trust.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe instead of the we should look and see if it would fit into the ARPA style, but maybe we should look at funding the projector instead of trying to go back and do the air conditioning.
Which would then free up some money.
Or allow them to hang on to it and keep making investment dividends in the future that offset their budget.
Which is that?
So you could do that.
So
I guess I just look at, I feel like everything is important here.
Yes.
That we're looking at, and they run pretty lean and mean, and what a beautiful thing for the town.
Oh, yeah.
You know? Those unappreciative little hidden gems.
I think you mean unappreciated.
Right.
Unappreciated.
Unappreciative. Well, Dave, we should hang out for a day, you'd really like my language.
It sounded like they were burning.
Oh, God. Yeah, excuse me, my mother corrected me, but that's all right.
I'm very good at playing the language games. That was what my dad and I did all the time.
Oh, yeah, I'm good.
All right. Do we have
Get that from my father.
Other budgets?
Well, I thought Marty was going to be here, but the energy committee is the other one. And so if we were to be so kind as to have those
I don't think we should even look at this, it looks out of control.
Yeah, I mean, it's horrifically high.
How much do we have to talk about this?
So nothing should change, basically, the amount that's here is for the cost of the yearly membership into the I should know this, Clean Energy New Hampshire, and then the tickets for going to the Local Energy Solutions Conference. That's what, basically, the budget's for.
And that's included in this year-to-date spend.
So
So do we just make a motion to accept?
Well, we don't even have
Okay.
We'll do that all when we go through the whole budget, but nothing's changing, and that's what it's for.
This will go on the spreadsheet as the same.
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
All right, any other budgets?
No.
Sweet. That brings us to town-owned property.
Yay.
So
What I think is this holding?
I'm so excited that the Fisher property sold, and we got that all straightened out. Thank you for coming in special and signing, it really helped me out a lot, and I mean that. And as you see, they've been up there today, over the weekend
They're going for it. It's awesome.
Doing things. So we have one more deed to, that needs to be signed. This is the the property down in Hillsbury Lake, the cottage, that Harold French was the winning bidder, and he's assigned it to somebody else.
I knew that was gonna happen.
Yeah.
He's the check con.
The deed is made out to Martin Smith and Barbara Dagzwitz. And
Can he do that like that?
Yeah, I had a friend, a lawyer, so because I didn't know either, I just wanted to make sure it was gonna be okay, so so if you could sign this
So more or less, you can put a bid on the property.
Which is really what happened with the Fisher property.
Same idea.
Yeah, because Andrew, we have two assignments on that one, because Andrew and Emily assigned it to James and Deborah Knowlton. Deborah and James Knowlton assigned it to their ten thirty-one. Do you know what a ten thirty-one real estate thing is for IRS? I didn't, so
Well, you're gonna tell us.
It's like a trust of
It's like some sort of exchange, it's for IRS purposes, so, and again, I had the attorneys
Review it.
Do that. So this is the
All right, I'm getting ready to witness some signatures.
Comes the big guy with the stamp.
Anyway.
No, not the stamp!
It's even the way you walk over there with your stamp.
You've been odorized, and you've been
So does I'm just, I'm just more like just being nosy, so we these are the new, these are the new owners, and there's really no relation to the person that bought it, in a sense.
Doesn't have to be
No, no. I was just, I mean
I don't know what the relationship is.
I guess that doesn't matter.
But he got some money for that, too.
No. Dee, come on.
That's what life's all about. I mean, I
That's how business people
I know, that's not, it's not
You gotta wait and see, no?
Yeah, I will.
He wants to do it all at once, okay?
I can't witness until I see them sign it.
I didn't know you had to witness each individual one.
Apparently, they could sign it
And I'm the only one, you can check on that signature.
Where's my notary stuff?
He saw it. Right over here.
Oh.
Making me work for it.
How you doing?
Not too bad.
Yourself?
Good.
Are you guys still working throughout your Yeah, we're still heading through the agenda. Um, but while we wait for this, what can we help you with?
I'm just curious what the status is with regard to Julie, I don't know her last name, but the lady that lives across the street from my resident
With all the good stuff on her property, huh? That one?
Well, if you wanna call it good.
We, basically, since we discussed last with you here, we haven't dealt with her here. I know she went to a ZBA hearing, I don't, I didn't follow that entirely, because it was in the middle of the
The thing is, is back in June, when we sat upstairs, you guys made it very clear that you were denying her occupancy, and yet you guys allowed her to stay there all summer long. The thing is, is the majority of everyone, not including yourself, but everyone, was concerned about setting a precedent of things to come. And yet, I feel as though you guys I don't know, I feel you guys, all of you guys in this room, aren't doing your job in enforcing what should be taken care of. You guys are allowing this to continue to fester and for her to play the system. No, well, I'm voicing my opinion, and my concern.
Yeah, and I asked, so let me give you some of the where I think we are, and maybe Russ has a little bit more information from the ZBA. But as far as we did it, we denied the occupancy, she can then go
But then she stayed, continued to stay there
Well beyond what you guys allow. And then she has, A, a period of time, and then B, can also appeal that. And she was going to the ZBA to do that, at least I think that's what she was doing.
Yeah, she did, that was her last ZBA meeting, yeah.
And that would have been the last meeting, so that was middle or beginning of last month?
It was September.
September, okay.
Okay, but you guys still allowed her, because when we met in June on the sixth
So while that process is happening, while she's filed for an appeal, there's absolutely nothing that can be done to her.
Okay, so everything that says, oh, well, you're not supposed to stay there beyond ninety days, it's like, oh, well
Unless you have an active thing going on, yeah. So if you're in an active appeal, the, any kind of enforcement would have to wait until after that's done.
I think, I was at the ZBA meeting, and I thought she wasn't gonna stay there at all, and we had I can't remember his name, and I should know, well, he listed a whole bunch of things, like
Tyler Lushell.
You gotta have a septic system designed, and where you're gonna put the house, and you can't stay there, and she said she wasn't gonna stay there at all, and I, when I go by, never see anybody, huh? I'm sorry, but, no, I'm just saying what I understood at the ZBA.
So if you think that she didn't stay there, I have cameras that monitor my front door
So
that fully show everything, so if you, you're gonna try to blow smoke up my ass that she didn't stay there?
No, I, I just, no, I'm not, I mean, that's what she said at that meeting, was I, am I
So let me just ask the point of clarity then, so we don't continue down this, and we can address this more later if this doesn't get us an answer. Where are we since the ZBA meeting happened, and what is supposed to happen going forward?
So what the ZBA told her, she withdrew her appeal from the select board, because she said she was no longer staying there. So she says she's been gone. And the second part is, she didn't have all the required documents, so she requested an extension from the ZBA, and the ZBA granted her a two-year extension on her application. It doesn't give her permission to stay there.
What a joke. What a joke.
Well, you had the opportunity to go to the meeting.
Yeah, no, I do, but you know what? You guys aren't doing your job either, you know, like, you guys, you know, I don't know.
Is she living there now?
No, not currently.
Has she been living there in the last month or two?
Absolutely.
Really?
I would encourage you to file a complaint, like a written complaint, that can say when she was there last, and then that can be brought to the ZBA and
It would go to you.
Oh, it would go to us, okay.
Your code enforcement body.
And then we can consider that alongside the ZBA testimony that she made, and so on and so forth, and then we can go from there.
Because, because I remember that I can't remember his name, anyway, he asked her for specific things, like, don't come back in front of the ZBA until you have a septic system drawn up, and you've got where your house is gonna be, the size of your house, and all this other stuff.
All right, so you're, are you trying to say that she can't do physically, she can't live there until she provides those documents?
I think that's basically
If she wanted to
Or you guys go allow her to stay there again for ninety days, and then, oh, well, she's gonna claim, you know, pity me, and then you guys are gonna allow her to stay there longer than she, than she has, like she's already done.
I mean, if she applied again, it would be up to the board to make a decision. She has the same rights as any other property owner in town.
Yeah, but she's playing the system.
So I think I will leave it with my suggestion that probably the best way for us to be able to move forward as a board is to have a formal complaint that she's living there and isn't supposed to be.
Well, she's not currently there, living there now.
Okay, well, maybe the next time that she is, then. And then we can move forward with that.
Well, I want to be very clear in understanding when was she not allowed to be there? A specific date. You give me a specific date, and I'll show you proof.
In theory, that would be after the ZBA hearing, when she dropped the
I would have to look up the date of the hearing, but it was in early September.
After the date of the ZBA hearing, when she said that she was no longer there and dropping the appeal process.
And it was made very clear to her that if she, she has to have A, B, C, and D done before she can even think about
All right, so I don't have anything to write with, or take notes. Which one of you five will take my email address? Or if I send either, any of you, an email with regard to what we discussed?
If you send an email to either Russ or Dana, but probably Russ is the easiest. They can send you, they can send you the form back, and you can email back the information.
Okay, do you have a card with your email address?
I do. It's also right on the town website.
And I understand that, Russ, but I'd rather have something, you know, where I don't, you know, I can just take it, but I appreciate it, but no, I just, you know.
Well, I know at the ZBA meetings
If any of you were in my situation, you might be a little frustrated as well.
I would definitely be frustrated.
You know, but, yeah, you know, I only have so much time in the day to deal with the bullshit that's going on, and yet if you don't understand my side, why don't you come with over there and deal with what I've had to deal with for the last four years?
Well
You know?
This is the way forward, that we'll be able to try to get something done and help you with in that regard.
So make this clear, I will send you an email, and if you can make it, if you can be clear in what you guys had mentioned about the CBA
I mean, I could send you the video of the meeting if you want to watch it, or
Well, that would be fine, too.
Yeah.
But, you know, if you can explain, just to give a short summary of what we discussed this evening, as far as, you know, us needing to file a complaint or whatever it is, you know, you mentioned, but you're saying that there was a CBA meeting that took place.
Right.
And you're indicating that basically she withdrew her And you're indicating that basically she withdrew her.
Right, so you remember you were at the August one.
No, it was in January or June, June 6th was the only meeting I've come to.
So you were given notification for the August meeting, which we didn't have a quorum for. So they postponed the hearing till September.
All right, so you're saying I was notified?
Yes, you were notified by mail, certified mail, that there would be a ZBA hearing.
I didn't sign for anything.
I mean, I have the certified receipts that you were sent to the post office and it was mailed.
Yeah, well, if you can.
And I believe, I think your wife was there, the first one. I don't think you were there, but I think she was there.
There's only been one meeting that we went to and that was the meeting that.
Yeah, but this is.
But I, I apologize. I wanted to try to take care of your business so that you didn't have to sit here for everything else.
No, I was willing to.
But I do want to keep going through the, the rest of the agenda at this point.
Right, but I can work with you and we can figure out, we'll talk about it.
And if more needs to happen through that, then they also have a different form to get you an appointment with the select board if that's needed as well. And then we can add you onto the agenda at a future meeting to handle that.
All right, well.
But I know at the ZBA meeting was, we pointed out all the things she had to do and she understood that when she left.
Well, I'll make it very clear, I did, if I did receive a certified letter, I did not personally sign for anything, so.
We don't send it the signed receipt, we just send it certified that we handed.
Okay, but I work with the post office. Anything certified has to be signed for by an individual.
It was stamped by the post office.
That doesn't, I, you can argue, you can make your point. I work with the post office. If I have a certified, I have to deliver it to the door and I need a signature. If I don't, then I don't get it, plain and simple. I didn't physically sign for anything, so I'm gonna make that very clear. So you guys have a great evening.
All right, so moving on, I believe we are done with the town on property.
Uh, no, I wanted to ask another question if I may.
Yes.
The property across the street from the property that you sold, the Fisher property, the garage and the little, it is a very, I don't, I think it's a .03 lot or it's small.
Yeah.
A few hun- a few hundred square feet, I guess.
I just noticed this is .23, but it's not that big.
Oh, yeah, I think that was the, it's supposed to be .023 or something like that.
Anyway, normally, as you know, you put things out for bid. This property, I don't know how attractive it is for someone to bid on it. Emmett has expressed that he would like the garage. And I think when Carol Sacyack or whatever her name is, the neighbor, had mentioned that she's interested in looking, looking to.
Yeah.
Looking to acquire it again. So I didn't know if you wanted me to approach her with, it's just under seven thousand dollars is what. And maybe I could knock off some of the legal work depending on how much more there is to do of what's owed on it. It was fifty-one, sixty-one for taxes when we took it and then accounted for the lost taxes and the recording and the legal work.
So the, the property across the street, because they're two separate things, we couldn't have taken the money from that sale before it goes over to the.
Yeah, we didn't sell that. We didn't sell that one across the street.
No, I know that, but, but they were the same owner, correct?
Yes.
Same.
At one time they were, yes.
The only thing that created the difference was they're two different lots.
Right, yes.
So when we sold the house we just sold to whoever.
That side of the street.
Right, but we can't use, utilize the money before we send the extra to probate to pay this off. Do you see where I'm stepping?
Correct, because they're two, they're considered two different properties, two different deeds, two different sales. For whatever reason, they were different tax lots. Oh, because the, because one is on one side of the road and the other's on the other side, which.
Yeah, well, I guess Mrs. Fisher purchased that from Carol's late husband is how it was, so that she could.
So she wants it back again.
She said when they widened Route 127, it kind of took out a lot of Mrs. Fisher's driveway.
I guess all I was wondering is.
I know what you're saying, yeah. But on that sale, this isn't really an expense for that sale. Could I get away with it? I shouldn't say this, but you don't know.
But if that other lady wants it.
Well, again, I was trying to see, satisfy the town, satisfy the town so that we didn't lose any money.
And again, I mean, the board can decide any amount that they want to sell it for.
Well, I think what you're trying to say is.
I'm just saying, this is what we have in it, yeah.
And what we would be allowed to keep.
Right. I mean, and I think in that case, you're probably not gonna get more than.
Yeah, we can't build or anything. It's, it's kind of.
I still wasn't, I, I get that whole part. I just, something as merely as what divided it. When, you know, with making the town whole, whole, the town whole. And instead of, you know, the state sitting on this money that could make the town whole, I just didn't know if we wouldn't, didn't want to double check to make sure that we're not allowed to apply that expense.
I mean, I have not asked the attorney this question.
And probably will prove me wrong. But I don't think it's a bad question.
No, I don't mind asking. I just hadn't thought of that.
But it probably what you're saying is the whole, but I just, that kind of makes me look crazy.
Yeah.
Well, if that other person wants it, it's the same, the town will still be whole with.
Well, it's, they're owed seven thousand.
Yeah, they're, they're, they'd probably pay that.
So the.
I don't think it hurts to double check.
Our, our selling of property policy goes into detail about small lots because of Pillsbury Lake. It mentions specifically for Pillsbury Lake and not others. However, it would make sense to me to treat this much like we would a Pillsbury Lake lot and offer it for that minimum bid to the two abutters.
Of which we won.
Oh, then it would be three abutters then, because the person across the street who currently doesn't have a garage.
You can't merge across the street, so you can't.
Oh, well, okay, fair, because you can't merge it then.
I think.
And the town, I don't think abuts it either because I think it's a little island plot in the middle of her lot.
I'm pretty sure it's between, I'm pretty sure it's wrapped around her lot. I'm not, I.
Oh, she would be the only abutter?
The only abutter.
Okay, okay.
So.
I mean, so I guess that's why, why I'm kind of bringing it up, because it, it's kind of wouldn't work the way we normally would do it.
I mean, and the, this is one of those examples where.
The reason.
Right.
For the exception exists.
So the primary, the primary driving theme is at the beginning of our policy, which is properties will be sold in a consistent, fair manner with the best interest of the town in mind. The goal is to get the properties back into tax payments and producing revenue for the town. So that's the primary goal of selling property.
And you really can't build on that because it's too small, so the only logical person's the abutter.
Yeah, because like, yes, it has a building on it and an existing footprint and stuff, but you could never do.
No, because you could never get a septic, no, exactly.
It's too small.
Right.
So you don't have to worry about that. It, it wouldn't be considered a, like, you could never do anything other than, you know, a garage.
Yeah, right, sell it to the abutters. For what's owed the town.
I, the, the main question to me is, do we offer it only to the direct abutter? Or do we also offer it as a bid between that direct abutter and the people across the street who just bought the house that it used to be associated with?
I thought you just said you can't do that now.
You can't merge them, but it could go back to, like, it could still own two lots and pay on both of them.
Could just send it out to bid.
Yeah, you could do that, I guess.
Following our policy as much to the letter as possible without invoking the special requirements portion at the end would be to just put it up to bid and notify both of them. And then I would assume that either one of them would bid or nobody would bid because no one could use it for anything. And then, since that, we would then go into obvious, like, well, it's not gonna go, so we should make one of these other offers.
Kind of try it throughout the bid.
I.
But I think if they didn't say a butter was.
I would personally prefer it to just go to one of the.
Well, because of the history.
Because I think that serves everybody better.
Because of the history of the situation to begin with.
I would hate somebody to just buy it and then like park some random stuff there.
Yeah, yeah, like.
Because that, that doesn't seem like in the best interest of the town. So.
Well, if, you know, I would just assume if the abutters want to pay the price that we have in it, it would be worth it to them.
Do you think we should only offer it to the direct abutter to be merged, like we would do with Pillsbury Lake? Or do we think we should also offer it to the purchasers of the.
Across the street.
House that it used to be associated with across the street? And then allow them to bid against each other instead of just making an offer.
All right, that's fine. I'm, I'm game, either one.
I'm, I'm just asking.
I know, I don't, I just, yeah. I, yeah, I guess put it out. I don't know, it just.
Well, the latest, that house across the street is owned by this 1031 organization in Florida.
That's true, it's a random organization.
So I don't, I mean.
What are they gonna do with that?
It's an IRS, I don't understand it, but.
Write off?
It's, yeah.
It's a way to do random things with taxes.
Well, either way, I, I say offer, I think the history shows that the, the woman that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that owns the property now that would benefit, the only one that really would benefit from it. But she also had done something for the people across the street with that, where, you know.
Yeah, there was.
Because there's, there's history, there's, right, it's documented.
Would still be on that deed that they now have.
Right.
Yeah.
So to me, it makes more sense just to do what you first suggested, which is in our policy. And offer it to that lady and it would be interesting to see if the proceeds from this last sale, which probably gonna be now, when you say it.
I'll ask. My question would be around the fact that if this went over for an ease, an access easement, what would then, does this cancel the access easement?
No.
So without this canceling the access easement, it then is effectively making it harder for the new property owners that are across the street from the little property if they don't have an opportunity to go for it.
Okay. Well, probably should just put it out to bid then.
I would, personally, I would consider both of them direct abutters because across the street we're using it. And since it's not Pillsbury Lake, we're not conditioning that it must be merged.
Right.
One of them would most likely and the other probably wouldn't.
I think the easement makes it a little bit more messy.
Which is why it's weird.
Yeah. Okay, so.
And you don't really have control over the easement.
No.
Correct.
Yeah.
So let's, I say we'll put it out to bid.
I think that makes the, okay, so if we're gonna do that then, we've done the discussion, we have to take a roll call vote with reasons clearly stated and recorded in the minutes.
Well, if you're putting it out to bid, then you don't need a.
Well, it's any waiver from the requirements of this policy. And so are we putting it, do you want to put it out to general bid or do you want to put it up to bid to just the two? Because if it's general bid, we don't have to do anything. If it's a bid just to the two, then we have to state why we're doing it different as part of that and take a roll call.
I think the only people that really gonna even have an interest in it is, is your, like, you're putting it out. So why don't we just put it out to general bid and then there's no.
Right.
I call it pointing fingers.
Right.
Exactly.
There's this, we didn't, we, we were not God, we were not.
As much as we can, so, yeah.
Put it out to bid, I think.
That makes sense.
Yeah, fine.
And if neither of them bid, then, then we can do something else afterwards with good reason.
What is your thought on the garage building?
I would say put it out to bid as is. That's my vote.
Oh, yeah, right, as is, right.
As is, I wouldn't.
I would say put it out to bid as is and.
Whoever purchases it.
If one of them wins it and they may want to use it. If the other wins it, they probably want it gone and may be happy to donate it.
Okay. All right, I will talk to general bid, buddy. Yes, general?
All right.
Okay, going right along. We've got a long day tomorrow.
That's right.
Sorry, accidentally just closed my agenda. There we go. So are we done with town on property now?
Yes.
All right, that moves us on to the town office door replacement.
Okay, so I have two bids on town office doors. I'd love to have another one. One is from Portland Glass and one is from Granite State Glass. I got updated bids because I had asked this, was this some time ago? Portland Glass bid is twelve thousand three oh seven. And that is this door that goes to the outside and the door that goes into the cafeteria. So that's two doors. And nine thousand dollars was the bid from Granite State Glass. So I did not get an updated bid from this electronic security protection, which is the FOB people.
So you got two different, you got bids for the doors themselves basically?
Right.
Are there material differences between the styles of doors or the security levels, et cetera?
Pairs to pairs.
As far as I can tell, yes. They're the same, they're commercial doors, fiberglass doors, no rock frame, aluminum sill, door sweep. And the same on the other one as well. Yeah. Yeah, and this is not, this might be easier.
Oh, these are both Portland Glass.
Yeah, they're both the same.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. This might say it.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
I see.
And again, I guess I'm looking for, if you want to go forward, that we would talk further, make sure that we're getting what we think we're getting. We had talked, there's been several scenarios given out about different doors, but I think we're down to just these two.
I think those would be, I think that would be the only doors that would need replacement. I haven't looked at the one up there, but I think that's just a cheap wood core, like hollow door, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in order to do any kind of security, actual security, then that should be better. So that makes sense to have both of those doors covered.
So on, on Granite State says need code approval for panic and electric strike options to be priced upon approval.
What does it say, code?
Yeah, panic, I guess what's that?
I assume that's, I assume that's to go with the FOB system.
Right, that, that we have to still purchase.
Yes.
These are just actual in the doors.
Yes, this is the FOBs.
And do you have the other door one? Oh, these are the two Portland's, got it. Exterior and interior doors. Interior, interior doors. So the Portland Glass one. Says that they are including panics, pulls and strikes.
Oh, that might be the difference in price though.
The, so that is probably the, like, I would assume that that is part of the difference in price.
Cause it says.
Yeah, cause this is needing code approval for these options to be priced on approval. So that is a difference. So even though they're cheaper now, they don't have that included. And the. Electronic security protection, which is the FOB system quote, is including things like the room strike and the door strikes. Uh, so. We have a little bit of an overlap here. Um, so I don't think that there's anything that we can approve here other than that we want this to happen. So do we want this to happen?
Yes.
I, I think we want this to happen. Um, so. I will return these and suggest that.
Just like this.
And then suggest that, uh.
Okay, we will, we'll, we'll boil it down.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's get it to a whatever, uh, is the most appropriate form. Whether that's the door companies handling the strikes or the FOB company handling it and then.
Okay.
Then we can choose a bidding bid.
Okay.
Alright, that moves us on to new business. First is the new ballot box and I don't know if either of you have seen.
I have.
It's amazing.
It's it.
Exhibit A.
My favorite one ever.
It is great. I, I looked at it fairly in detail last night at our elections training. And, uh, last night? Yeah, last night.
And it's very, it's very nice of them to do that. I prepared this thank you letter for you to sign.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, very.
Yes, thank you for thank you to thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for sending home.
This is the easiest thing we've done all night.
Right?
Oh, now we get to perambulate.
Oh, yeah, that's one of my favorite words.
I know, can someone tell me what it means?
Walking.
There is a law, a New Hampshire law, that towns every seven years have to walk their border with the adjoining town.
Oh.
Um, and Salisbury has approached us and it's been longer than seven years.
A lot longer.
That they would like to perambulate with you.
Oh.
And so I guess they're kind of looking for who you might pick to be the per- perambulator.
In the past.
Can I take my side by side?
You can do whatever you wanted.
It's kind of a seat, come with me.
It might, it might not fit on all of the areas.
You'd be amazed.
True. I've seen some of the places that some people can go with those.
Yeah.
Um, in the past, we've had, uh, people who have volunteered to do this. Uh, I believe with Bosco last, I don't know if that actually happened, but.
You've had, uh, the select board in the, in years past have appointed different people to do this.
Have we had anybody of express interest or that even knows that they could express interest?
They don't know that they could express.
And know what they're prem- premulating.
The last time I heard interest was like two years ago, so they might not.
I always wonder, I mean, if you go out, for example, if I went out to perambulate.
Yeah.
I, how, you know.
I'm wondering how would we, how would we know?
Yeah.
In theory, you're supposed to look at the.
I guess you look at the former one.
Where the pins are.
And you walk that?
In theory.
Yeah, in theory, cause you know where the one in Conticket, between Conticket and Webster's in the middle of the water.
Is my late?
There's a big, there's a big.
A little bit, but it's fine.
You should have been here a little while ago.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I was thinking, I was, I was actually thinking, we might have missed you a little bit. Are you busy?
Alright.
I guess.
We're okay now, the roads are open anyway.
Oh, that's good.
I could, I could get into, ask the municipal association how one perambulates.
Right.
And what type of, what type of documents do you have? Maybe you go by the, I've seen very nicely written up perambulations, well, we went so many degrees to so many degrees to. And we found a stone monument and so forth, but I wouldn't think, and then of course, every town line I've ever known goes through a swamp.
That's.
You got that right. Probably the winter.
Sometimes right over a mountain too.
I know where the boundary is in Bosco, when the rock that's on there, but then it goes like where the swamp is before Pillsbury Lake. That's, that must be where it goes.
It just kinda feels like you should have a licensed surveyor doing this to, even, but I don't feel that, what.
Why don't I send you some of the paperwork on the last one so you can look at it?
No, that might help you give maybe of whatever.
And that might, yeah, I should have done that.
It's, it's eye opening.
Hmm, it's, it's, it's amazing.
Think you're learning, isn't it something?
Um, but, okay. Well, I'm going to then tell Salisbury we're working on it.
Sounds good.
We have agreed to perambulate with you.
I'm never gonna get that word right.
It only took me two years.
I'm very good at that.
Alright, uh, so, snow shovel.
Okay, well, I'm glad Steve is here, um, because.
He's gonna bring the snow shovel?
We, yes.
He likes to shovel.
Shovel snow.
We'll bring a snow shovel, alright.
Um, we need someone to shovel snow here and at the safety building. Um, and so I'm writing up a job description. And here, it's finding someone is, it's tough, cause again, you've gotta make it lucrative enough so that someone wants to do it. And if we ask them for insurance, which normally we do when people work for us. I mean, that, that's a cost to them, which we probably end up paying for anyway, um, at the end of the day.
Where do you need, where do we need shoveling here that they can't plow?
Um, this door, and, and, and it's close, I mean, the plow, the emergency door in back to the hall, that's up. Back door, the library and the ramp that goes to the handicap. And the, and the, and the front door to the hall.
Yeah, the stairs up to the hall.
And do you need shoveling up at your place?
We basically shovel our own.
I was just.
Well, I shoveled a lot.
He, most of theirs, most of theirs is gonna be like this.
I think he's figuring that short. If they only do one little section, they're not gonna come for that.
Right.
That's the thing.
Yeah.
I mean. Now, actually, Michelle's usually looked at how it was done.
So last year, what happened when, uh, Brenda used to do it years ago, but she doesn't do it anymore.
Cause I, I thought it was an either gentrial or perks thing.
So what happened, one time, I guess there was a snowstorm in Saturday. And of course, we weren't here and the library didn't get shoveled out. And, and I understand, that's kind of a pain.
It's nothing that Emmett would wanna charge for in a sense, is it?
I've tried that.
Oh, okay.
I've been there. I've also asked, um, um.
Oh, I know.
Fred at the school, if he might have any suggestion. Last year, I had a human service client that I put him on the work program. And it worked great the first time and he was shoveling out the driveway and I'm like, no, no, you don't shovel the driveway.
He was gonna shovel the driveway.
Yeah. But, I mean, there's a reason why these people aren't working, cause he didn't, you know, come back. Um, so I guess I'm, I'm, you know, wanting to put something out, I wanna think about. Can we pay per, I mean, if you pay someone per hour, I mean, that's really not, it doesn't work for a job like that, so.
Yeah, normally it's per storm.
Per storm.
And then certain amount.
If you, and if you want to, I mean, if, if we're gonna require insurance. And I have to check into if they didn't have insurance, how our insurance would fit in with it. We're gonna have to pay them enough to make it worth their while, if we can find anyone anywhere, cause no one can find anyone to work for them anyway.
Can you get a sixth grader?
I would love a sixth grader.
Oh, no, they're fifth grade, sorry.
They'd be happy to come over and do it.
You know?
Thing to do is find some, but it's gonna be hard to find some kid that'll.
That's, and I'm, you know, if I knew.
Well, anyway, I don't expect you to solve that tonight, but that's where I am.
Okay.
Hopefully you don't have any snow before the next month.
Well, I just say, go out and shovel the, shovel it out, you know?
Usually does it before I get here and then I yell at him, like, why didn't you wait till I got here, then I would have done it.
I have one of those little electric shovel things.
I did acquire an electric shovel, I don't know if it works, I should, I should check it out.
Mine, that works okay.
I acquired it from one of your copies.
For soft snow, it's not exactly good for our wets, really wet snow.
I mean, I think.
But it would work fine for the ramp. Which they're normally, they're normally deck sweeper type things.
Yeah.
A blower should work, you know, well for the ramp.
Yeah?
Yeah. I, well, I think.
No, 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 leaf blowers, have you seen it?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I was thinking of like having a track.
Problem is when it's the wet or icy stuff. If it's just the powder, you just go up and you sweep it real quick and you're done.
Yeah.
That's not, that is the hard part.
It's when heavy snow, it's a.
A commercial facility.
Yeah.
And so the guy following it.
Shovel it.
Shovel it.
Yeah.
Cause it's really not a whole lot, it's, you just jump out and tutu and.
Yep.
Well, I usually, I usually go up there and I'm not tututing.
No, no. No, but there is, I get it, I'm not, yeah.
If it wasn't for our long ramp, I wouldn't think it would be an issue, but we've got the fairly sizable ramp.
And then there's the walkway in the back to the generator and the emergency. That's, that's, that's the painful part.
And that's where you'd know, that would be, you'd have.
If only we had a drive around driveway, so that that was right next to the driveway.
Well, we could change our drive, cause we've got that new driver going down over the bank.
That's not the direction.
Alright, I will continue with that.
Okay.
Just wanted you to know that. It's a dilemma that we're working on.
Alright, so that moves us on to cell tower at the town office.
That's an interesting concept.
You brought up to us.
Well, not necessarily at the town office, but.
Oh, I thought that's what you had.
I guess what we wanted, we, there's so much we don't know how to do. Um, we've never put in a cell tower.
Correct.
And in the town?
Yeah.
In the town.
Well, Dave had met somebody at an event he was at who.
Oh, not, the, the most wonderful event ever, I was dropping off our trash at the transfer station.
Oh, that's something more formal.
Dave was at an event. It's a trash event.
Well, I was just dropping off my trash and, uh.
At the transfer station, you don't ever talk to anybody, you just throw your stuff away and go.
And, uh, the guy that was there, his, his business on the truck and everything was constructing cell towers.
Oh.
Um, and doing all of that, so I got the card, got the information, sent it off to, uh, various folks. Uh, the two chiefs and Russ and Dana, so that we would have that information. Cause I know there's been talk in the, in the past, especially for up behind the safety building. Trying to put something there so that they actually have service, uh, which. So now you're using a, a little microcell inside the building for.
Inside the building. And as long as you're within ten feet of the building, you're fine.
Mm-hmm.
You move out of that, you're in trouble.
But for example, if it were, a lot of people in the past have said, oh, just use our, our steeple. Well, the reality of something of that is that you, you could technically do it. But it would, it probably wouldn't even get to the safety building. It might, but probably not, because we are in the bottom.
Right, it'd be one thing if we were on the hill.
Whereas if it were up on the hill behind the safety building, then it could actually reach the majority of people. In this side of town and over and across the lake and so on, depending on heights and. Powers of antennas and stuff like that. So I just got the contact information and said I knew that people were interested in this, so I passed it along.
But you can't get somebody to wanna pay us to put one there?
So there's the key, in that, um.
That's the thing you want.
The, you, you need a spot that is going to be considered commercially advantageous. And the gentleman that I got the contact information from, I just got a card and said, cool, I'll pass it along. So there's no, uh, expectations there.
Sure.
Uh, but he said that he would be able to put us into contact with the, uh, appropriate folks at the cell companies. That would either say, we'd like to put in a tower and, and lease the land, or do some pilot agreement, or. Uh, you put a tower in and we'll, we'll lease space off of it to, to hang our stuff. Um, so he has those contacts and someone can get in touch if that is something that, uh, anyone wants to move forward with.
Sure, that doesn't hurt to ask.
I don't carry a cellphone, I don't have one, so.
I know you're the one, I can't believe you asked.
I, we do not, I don't.
Good thing, cause you can't get service anyway, I can't find out. Well, if we get the tower in, yeah, I am too.
Um, so.
I guess we can contact him and find out who his contact is. Obviously, there's a procedure to go through for the town and the planning board and, and so forth, and, and ZDA and.
Well, my suggestion would be to work more with the chiefs on that, because they're the ones that know. How important it is to, to them.
Yeah.
And the, the, the equipment that they have and being able to use that and maybe not have to have repeaters and things. And then to also be able to put the, uh, radio system antenna on that instead of elsewhere and using repeaters. So there's a lot of additional, I know that they have that we don't.
That helps me a lot, thank you.
The other thing is, if you have a cell tower, you can, the more people that are on it, they pay the town, they'll pay the town. That's what.
Yeah, it's all income for the town.
Well, yeah, if, if we were to put it up back, if that even would work, they might put a road in.
Highest place around, really, I mean, that's.
And it wouldn't be really nice or to anything either.
Yeah, up on top, that's.
I don't think.
And it's pretty flat everywhere around there, so.
Well, and plus, to see it.
Behind the safety building.
Yeah.
Up with the.
The only thing, somewhere in my back of my pea brain, seems to me that when, after Bob Lake put his cell tower up. Seems to me there's some kind of zoning or something, they don't want any more towers in this town.
Well, that's where we're gonna get into the, to the weeds. That's, that's why Dana was saying it's gonna be a process with the ZDA and the planning board, because that's how it's written, that we have to follow it.
The key would be that none of that matters or makes sense if it doesn't make sense to do it for them.
Well, yeah, the chief, yeah.
Right.
But there will be a process, if it does make sense and it's a viable location, then there will be a nice lengthy process we're gonna have to follow.
But sometimes, things that come out of one thing and we set to go down a different path a little bit to unwind that, that's not. Or created, as that's what we're, I mean, granted, you're fortunate not to have to have a cellphone. I can drive that thing over lots, but why don't you miss it, cause.
It's a choice.
And, and, and when you get so used to it, too.
Oh, yeah.
The fact of all the, like, even when I went home tonight with no power, I had my cellphone with a light, but I.
And you could make calls.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
See, I can't even make calls at my house, my cellphone doesn't work there.
You know, like I said, um, there's King Lumber up in Wentworth, and they don't have any service and they had their guy stuck in a planer or something. And, you know, you, you, when you're used to nine one one right there, blah, 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 and there's no, there's no cell service. So it, it, because we lie, and a lot of people don't even have landlines now.
That's true, you're right.
But if they would do something to also, you know, help the town out. Like I said, I mean, we're talking about putting the road up to the safety, they might help pay for a access road. Which is a lot of times what they do, that's why most of the sticks and windmills up there too, no.
I don't think that would go over very well.
No, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it's worth, I think it's worth.
Okay, I'll talk, I'll talk to Steve about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll talk to Steve.
Steve, he's gonna talk to you about it.
Yeah.
We'll get together and talk about it.
Yeah, we'll make a point.
That's what you're talking about, to talk about.
We actually made it faster to this agenda than I thought.
Alright, so, um, we did department head reports, but, uh. All right, so, um, we did department head reports, but do you wanna go back and touch on the ARPA suggestions for, from the safety building since you're here?
So the ones that we were looking at, um, the cameras for the five station wanted a couple extra cameras. They were looking for the trailer.
That wasn't on here.
I was gonna say.
The trailer's on here.
This is what came from the department head meeting.
Meeting.
And on here.
Didn't he say he wanted extra cameras for outside of, in the back?
Did he, did he mention an amount? I don't, I don't recall.
I don't think he did mention.
I know Michelle mentioned that she wanted one here, but that's a different spot.
Because all I had was the carpet at the police department, and you had a quote for that. The seal coat of the driveway, the sign, and then Emmett mentioned the trailer for Cold Water Reserve.
Yep.
Which.
That's probably enough.
He gave a figure of 12,000, but I don't have any quote or anything for it.
What is that? What is a trailer for Cold Water Reserve?
So they're gonna put all the equipment that they can't fit in the ambulance in there. So, um, to fill their tanks for their air tanks.
Oh, oh, oh.
And all that stuff. That's all gonna go in there.
So it's the utility support trailer.
Basically, you're right. Basically that.
So it's not having, doesn't anything really do with water?
No, but they, it's, the Cold Water Rescue equipment will be in there and all that stuff.
Oh, okay, okay, I got it.
Oh, he's talking about rescuing from lakes or something.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I knew he said Cold Water.
Rescue, not reserve. Okay, that would make sense.
Thank you. That makes more sense.
What do you want Cold Water in a trailer for? Like Cold Water.
Well, in a summer time, it's a great thing.
Or when somebody gets hot, you're gonna splash them with it.
And Dee, you know how important it is to be hydrated.
I know, yes.
Little Jimmy gets to take a drink from the fire hose.
Stand by.
All right. Uh, did you have any other questions on, on that?
Nope.
All right, so that moves us straight on to correspondence.
Yes, and I am getting that way very shortly.
We already heard our public comment. You're, you're, you're also public. Would you like to make a comment?
It works fine.
Uh, I have no comment. I do have a couple of things that I wanna present to you, that's all.
Is the, uh, I'm assuming since you're here, but is the road clear of all of the lines and stuff now?
Roads all open up. Power's all back on, so everybody's got power and a good sized tree that came down.
Wow.
Where was it? I just got turned around, so.
Where the, um, um, God, it's building a new cabinet here. Put the cabinet shop in.
Yeah, yeah.
Almost across the street from it, right by his house.
Yep.
Um, big tree came down to call the wires out.
Holy cow. On the big hill?
Yep, right on the hill.
Wow.
So it was the person that came in, so.
Wow.
They came into Michelle's office after she called dispatch, and I guess it must have fallen right after she called.
Yeah, because it started with wires on fire, trees on the wires on fire, and then it went to the, oh, everything's down. And also, we got a brush fire now, so it went from one extreme to another.
Our awesome safety people got it all under control.
Matter of fact, one of your trucks came down through.
Yeah.
It had two guys in it, and I said, how are we gonna get home? I said, well, you gotta go out, get on Poverty Plains Road. He said, can I go this way? I said, yeah, road's closed at the end. He said, yeah, I don't know if I can get my truck through. I says, you get a logging truck. You can go through anyway. I said it right there. He went right down over it and kept running.
Now I wonder who it was. Geez, Steve, because I'm gonna give him crap.
Well, now you have the story at work.
Oh, yes. Talk to my children.
So, yes.
Okay, so, um, we got a letter from a, a citizen who is asking you to have some sort of mercy on his $50 penalty for not filing his inventory on time. Few weeks ago, we received a postcard from Russell Tatro regarding our inventory of taxable property form not received. I called Mr. Tatro and told him we mailed the form to the town on four twenty seven twenty two. I've enclosed a copy with the date mailed on back. We realized it was late and apologized, and we have never been late before submitting this form. We respectfully ask you to reconsider a $50 penalty. Gene and Joe.
Oh, they were honest. I appreciate that part.
What was that?
I read it.
No, they were honest to you. I appreciate that part.
Oh, they're very.
They were being very honest.
They, they, yeah, and said he mailed it four twenty seven.
Well, I completely appreciate the honesty. I, I like the thought. What has been the previous?
In the past, it's you're late, you're late.
Yeah, I thought so.
Unless you got a good reason to be late. Like the only one person I forgave, I think it's the only person I ever forgave to somebody was a bedridden veteran. And they said they couldn't get it in because they were bedridden, and I was like, well, next year, give me a call and I will fill out the form for you, and then we'll have somebody go out and get it signed. Yeah.
Well, I think that the document has said something about being bedridden and a veteran.
I think what it hit you was, like, because it happened to me and my mom the same year was, and we both thought, and I get where she's coming from, her and Joe, and I appreciate it, just like everybody's saying honest, but I had to, I think, I think it's sort of precedence that.
Yeah.
We might as well just take the $50, even though we'd love to, because I don't, I look at it as, yes, or we can give everybody one get out of jail card.
I don't want, I don't wanna make him have to track that.
No, I know, I know. That'd be the, you know.
It'd be nice, but I don't wanna make them have to track that.
But no, we would love to give it. I mean, I don't.
But, yeah, is there anything for us to do other than just?
Just deny it and send a letter back saying we appreciate your honesty, however.
Yeah, it is what it is, and I can write a good letter, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on? All right.
Uh, the next thing is something from NHMA. They are cleaning out their records, and they plan to discard, anytime we call them or, or send them an email, they keep a record of it for, like if I ask for legal advice, they'll have a record of it. They wanna clean things out that are older than January one, 2015. Or if we'd like it, we can have them back, but they're gonna discard them all. Do we need to have these records? I don't even know what they are.
I don't know what they are either.
Usually, if we were to be asking questions, we would have record of what we're asking, correct?
Yes, but we would also not have been on the board.
No, not us, meaning, meaning.
I was just trying to think of the, the timeframe and what might have been.
I've, I've never seen a log or anything that keeps track of what.
I save all my emails from them.
I know what I have to say, but.
I mean, we.
I guess it feels like we always know when you ask them something, it's been the minutes.
Yeah.
So if it were something that the board requested be asked, then it would be in minutes. If it were something that the chair decided needed to be asked, it probably wouldn't be. It might be in email, or it might have been a phone call. So then if it's the phone call, theirs would be the only log. But 2015, like, we're talking seven plus years ago.
I don't really see you getting an each.
Yeah, I mean, even the whole previous board wouldn't have been doing anything at that point, so.
It reminds me of the seven year IRS rule.
Yeah.
After seven years.
I, I think it's fine, like, if there were something in particular, like, say, for example, there were particular land deals going through in the past few years, probably makes sense for us to request that we keep copies of that, or anything that was requested. Not that they gave us any advice on it, but.
Well, the easy thing now is because they always say you would need to contact.
Yeah, contact the attorney. But that would be like, if, if there were a particular event that we were interested in, when was the police chief changeover? That's about the only thing I could think of that.
Right around 15.
So maybe there's.
Would you like to, um, we say we'd like it, and then we can look through and see what we should, think we should keep?
I don't really wanna make them furnish everything.
Well, they've just, they've just got it in a box. They're just gonna probably. Russ would be happy to go through that.
Oh, of course. Some of that stuff's gotta be real interesting.
I mean, at this point.
Start a good fire.
That would be bound statute of limitations stuff anyway, right?
Would be now, because all that went to, all that went to court and was settled in court.
Yeah, so then.
Court documents would be more important anyway, so I don't think we care.
I'd say send it.
Let them destroy it.
And you can think of something that would matter for us to have?
Not, not in the last seven years. I think I'm earlier than that. There's some good stuff.
Well, this is saying records that are older than January one, 2015.
Right, it's more than, yeah, but.
So, but yeah.
All right.
Right.
The next letter is from the DRA.
This one sucks.
Talking about the equalization.
Just gonna say it. Oh, the equalization. Okay, this one's not that bad.
Oh. All right, it's the next one.
Yeah.
And basically, this is something that the assessors do, work on the equalization report, which they have to have done by December 15th, and we'll stay on them because that helps them. I have to get this out of order. Um, have a letter from Unitile regarding small trees and shrubs.
Ooh. And we have wonderful signage from them from who knows how long ago.
Oh, I'm sure that's old.
That says exactly the same thing.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't give you the whole thing, because they had all these hints about what shrubs you could.
Yeah, things that are not in 20 feet and so on. There's actually a chart on the board here if anyone's interested. It's far more detailed than.
Been this as an administration, but anyway.
Do you really think the towns are gonna plant these trees or what?
I think it's more encouraging, uh, people to know about it, so that if someone plants a tree under a line or next to a line, it's not a problem.
Then we got a letter from the DOT about the revised block grant.
But someone really needs to tell those squirrels.
Yeah, exactly.
They made a mistake in the calculation, and we owe them 368 dollars and 32 cents, and they'll be issuing an invoice in the next 10 to 15 business days.
Only, only the state and the government can do that, right?
I guess we have to give it back.
Me and you did that, they'd be like, yeah, no.
Exactly. Sorry.
Yeah, oopsie.
Whatever we say sorry, we spent it.
Yeah.
We'd love to send it to you. Can we pay it off and rip it back?
We have, we have some sand that we purchased with it. Would you like that?
I hate to be grumpy, but how do we know they're right?
Oh, I'm sure they're right on that.
Really?
I mean, we got it right last time, that's why.
Well, you said it was only 388, you know.
368.
368.
You know, it's.
I think it should be just, you did it, so we won't, don't do it again, and we'll keep the money.
I would have just done it the next year, would have just dinged you for it. You wouldn't have, no, I told you.
All right, we know where he's at.
The last thing is, Russ gave me the notice from the planning board approval for a payment plan for a, um, impact fee.
Perfect. Yeah.
You know all about that one.
When an impact fee goes on a payment plan, when are we required to spend it as a town? We're on the first date of it's due, or we're on a full completion and payment?
I would err towards the side of caution and say when we receive the first payment as the start date, because.
I don't think the law really specifies anything about an easy budget payment plan.
Right, that's why I'm kinda saying go by the first payment, because you know you're safe if you go by the first payment.
Yeah, because I've heard of that for taxes, but not for impact fees.
Right, that's, that's a Webster thing.
Well, and I, but I think it's nice.
It's nice.
Everyone has.
Yeah.
Resources they can.
Roughly, how much were we talking?
5,306 dollars.
Okay.
I memorized that number.
Oh, yeah, because it's the same for all of them.
Yeah, and it only took me two years to memorize it.
Which school gets 72%? Public station building gets another percentage.
However, the, it, not all the payments will be same. The last one's gonna be like four cents less.
Oh, no, that won't do.
Because the number doesn't divide equally into 12.
Does it account for interest?
I mean, the interest is our interest. That's the way.
No, they, you don't get the interest on it. We're losing out all this interest that we don't have in the bank.
Never, never got it.
I think we normally get like, you know, three cents a month on this.
Yeah, right.
Well, you know, it's been rising, so you might get four.
You know, I was amazed, because the general fund, I mean, we've been getting nothing for interest. I mean, it's really so sad. And last month, I think we got like 500 something dollars. So, I mean, it just shows you how the economy's, you know, turning.
That's weird.
And mortgages are, you know.
It's the inflationary, like, interest rate change stuff.
Of course, ridiculous.
It's all con game. Oh, sorry.
It's, it's all a shell game.
Yes, yes, shell game. That sounds more classy than con game, but you know what it is.
I think the word con's more fitting.
That's all the.
Anything in Washington does.
Correspondence I have, Dave.
All right. Uh, let's see. That moves us on to, uh, minutes, motions, and signing.
Yay. I need party favors.
Yay.
We need to release the flyer.
The little.
Yeah. All of the confetti.
Yeah, that's right.
Just to make it more exciting for you.
We can do that tomorrow. We have nothing to do all day.
I think we're gonna have plenty to do all day.
Really?
I think, I don't know. We'll see. No, I just think there'll be a lot of, yeah.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of.
Chatting.
Oh, just people talking tomorrow, yeah. People will be happy to finally be out and doing stuff in a normal way again for a large town business thing. This is the first, like, we used to, we used to, well, so the primaries were kind of normal for voting.
Yeah.
But this will be the first time since the pandemic shut it all down that we're gonna have the historic society there with calendars. We're gonna have the library there selling books. The church will be there selling food. So like, all of the normal stuff is now actually fully back.
The guys across the street in tactical gear with binoculars.
Are we gonna have food for Rusty?
You're not supposed to talk about the chief like that.
Well, I think the, the church is providing food tomorrow.
What was that?
The church is providing food tomorrow.
Oh.
Yeah, they've, they've normally had their late.
Well, you just, can you bring waffles up at this late?
Well, it's gonna be at the next one, because I gotta go vote myself tomorrow morning.
All right.
But at the town election, probably.
I like that.
Because then I can show up early and do it ahead of time.
All right. Waffles with ice cream and strawberries.
Okay, you just.
Whipped cream too.
Make the list.
Fresh strawberries.
I would suggest, so we've got three sets of minutes. We've got the normal meeting. We've got the non-public that happened with it. And then we also have the barn visit that I was not at.
That one's gonna be amended.
So.
I have an amendment for that one.
So I would like to suggest that since I wasn't there, and I will simply abstain from it, that one of the two of you make a motion after possible amendments that have been mentioned, which I have no idea what they are.
That was mentioned from the, from the Historical Society. Wants an amendment.
What was that?
The Historical Society wants amendment on the 20th. I did not know, but the chair of the Historical Society is no longer Dot Burke. It's now Barbara Corliss, and I didn't know that at the time.
Oh, I didn't know that either.
So we need to amend it, so the, the correct person's the chair of the Historical Society.
So do you want, I'll, I'll make that a motion to amend it. Yeah, please. Would you second?
I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then abstain.
Can't get them perfect all the time.
Okay, so, so do we make the motion to, um, accept the meeting minutes from October 17th?
Sure.
Please.
I second that.
Uh, both public and non-public?
Yeah, yes.
Are there any amendments that anyone wanted to make?
No, don't think so.
I didn't see anything.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that concludes our packet and our, uh, agenda other than signings and the last motions.
Yeah, you've got motions.
We have a motion.
So actually, this is, this is signing what you normally do. These would be unitile bills that are coming out of the general fund. So, actually, this is, this is signing what you normally do, these would be Unitil bills that are coming out of the general fund.
Are they still adding to our bank?
Yes, and I am working on that, but there's a certain time of year that you have to, they only kind of review it once a year. This is for payment of, um, credit card bills.
So. Help me out here, because last time, like, we're now doing this direct debit. They've got a late charge on here.
But if you notice, they also give you credit for it.
They really don't know whether they're coming or going.
Don't make me call Unitil. Yeah, I, I picked that up too.
So is the chief gonna be here for voting tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Good.
I will be here.
So will I be here.
And she really thought she was coming for waffles, but you just broke her whole dream.
That's right.
I'm sorry, I gotta vote two, you know? I mean, I could stop and pick up Brothers Donuts, I mean, that's.
That's a weird difference.
They must close, they must.
Oh, they're not open on Tuesdays now.
But are they, but they must close real early, and they must.
They open at three thirty in the morning.
Get out, really?
They open at three thirty in the morning.
Who's up, who's up at that time?
The guy's baking them.
Well, yeah, that's.
My husband makes donuts, so it, you know, will have, sometimes people come over. I'm like, yeah, he's my husband, and it's not true. Making the donuts, right?
So I know, I guess I'll sort of announce, but like, I wasn't planning on it. I went in and cut down the trees that were growing up in our solar array.
I was wondering who did that, because I saw that, saw that they were gone.
Yep, so I took care of that.
Aren't you nice?
But the, I would like to suggest that, um, since, I know the two arrays are angled slightly differently for different seasons of production, but they're, one of the arrays has half of the amount of the other, so I'd like to suggest that we send this to the energy committee to look into.
Okay, that's good.
I mean, I know some of us are here, but I don't want to try to do it now.
No, no.
And I think the whole energy committee should, should look at that, because normally the energy committee is, uh, going through that.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. That's kind of weird.
Oh.
Oh, I didn't sign it.
Like, you were just perusing everybody's purchases, I should make one of those.
All right.
Do we have other signings?
Um, no, you've got, I've got three motions for you.
All right.
We're actually more than three. One is, we have the bill for the police cruiser finishing the marking of the police cruiser. Some of the money was coming from the police revolving fund. Do I need a motion to do that? How's that work?
I don't believe so, I think they just.
He's doing the lettering next week.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that's theirs, as part of their budget, to spend on whatever they want.
Okay, so I could have Steve just sign off on this?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we've ever made motions on that?
Nope, never before.
I, I didn't know, um, we paid that out of the general fund, so we need it to, I mean, basically, we'll just have to raise transfer from one account to the other.
To the other.
But, anyway, I'll talk to Steve about that. I need motion for, this is for, um, Computec did work on the, the server because of the pay provision project, and that was gonna come out of the ARPA fund.
Yep.
So I'm looking for a motion to authorize, um, the, the Computec bill of eight forty one to be paid out of the ARPA.
Okay, this was including the, the memory upgrade as well as the installation and configuration. Okay. Uh, so I have moved to authorize payment from the town's ARPA funds to Computec anti-graders for eight hundred forty one dollars and invoice number two six six three five for work on the pay provision record retention project.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, these are the motions I need from, for the trustees.
There we go, nice. Let's see if these, uh, try to confuse me again.
Sometimes I'm successful.
Okay, I think we're good. All right, I would move to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check payable to police and flower farm. I'll, I'll see in the amount of three thousand four hundred twenty five dollars for invoice six nine two five for work on Deer Meadow Road. These funds to be withdrawn from the highways and roads capital reserve fund.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check payable to VHB in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred fifty three dollars and forty four cents to pay invoice three eight three six eight eight dash three nine for engineering work on Closed Pin Bridge. These funds to be withdrawn from the bridge improvement capital reserve fund.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I've moved to request the trustee of trust fund issue a check payable to town of Webster in the amount of two thousand six hundred eighty six dollars and ninety cents to reimburse the town for expenses to outfit the police cruiser referencing the town meeting of twenty twenty two, article number four. These funds to be withdrawn from the police cruiser capital reserve fund.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And is there anything further?
No, I'm happy to, you'll be happy to know, no, there isn't. Steve wants the chat, though.
So we've made it through our agenda, and we have a not-so-public public.
This is a purchase order for one thousand eight hundred thirty seven dollars and eighty three cents for a rifle and a shotgun for the new cruiser. But that is not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of our, um, police detail fund. So we raised enough money to pick up that, but we need a new rifle and shotgun for the car, do not have one.
This is that same revolving fund?
So, so that doesn't come out of any, that comes out of that fund?
Uh, the revolving fund is different than the detail.
Police cruiser and equipment.
But do you have two accounts, is there a detail, or are they?
That's, it's a detail revolving fund, I guess it's called.
So it's one account?
One, one account.
Okay.
And so. We, so should we just be signing the PO then for the lettering, or did we already?
No, that was, what you just did was.
Well, that was the, coming out of the trust fund.
Right.
But there was a chunk that was coming out of the revolving fund that we weren't making a motion for.
Right, you told me to talk to the chief about that, so.
So.
It's funny, because if I, if I recall.
Is there a PO that we're supposed to sign, or we already did that ages ago, didn't we?
I don't think we have to even notify the select board on that, because it's, the only we's do is, because it's over a thousand dollars.
Well, the only drawback you have, you have to let us know, because we won't change the money.
Yeah, you can't change the money unless we do. But we, I always bring it before them first anyway, that way it's just safer that way.
Well, I find it's easier to.
I was just trying to reconcile that we were signing for this, but not the other one?
Well, the, the other one's a little different, because that was an article from the town meeting.
That's true.
That the town already voted on.
Yeah, yeah.
So we really don't have a say.
Well, yeah, I thought we still had to sign off on POs, because even if it's in a final.
I know, I was just kidding, because they said, but the town voted on it.
I mean, either way, it's been, it would be happening, but, uh, that makes sense.
Trying to illuminate my signature?
God, I can't. Baby, look, oh my god.
So when we get the bill, Steve, you're gonna tell us that's where it comes from?
Yes.
Okay.
Baby, oh my god.
There you go, sir.
Thank you.
And I'll zip that to them tomorrow, so they can get it right on order, because it's gonna take, it takes them a little while to get it.
I'm just gonna copy it for me?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'll pick it up tomorrow.
Oh, all right.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay.
Is there anything further?
The only I have is a letter from Lieutenant Mitchell. And, uh, I'll let you guys decide on how you wanna do that.
This can't be good.
No, it's not bad. I just don't know if that's personnel issue or.
I can see the wheels.
Oh. I almost think that's personnel issue.
I agree if we're going to talk about it.
Yeah. That's why I dropped it off. I told him I'd drop it off.
Well, I've been playing on my, my daughter's babysitting kids, and they get like this little poppin' thing.
She was just thinking of the old computers where you need to push the pin in to eject?
Yeah.
Oh, I think I got the.
Oh, I love those little.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so we've all read it, do we want to go into non-public to discuss it?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll talk about that.
Uh, so, the time is now nine, uh, before I do that, is there anything further for public session?
Not for me.
Okay. Well, um, this time is now nine twelve. I've moved that we enter into non-public session under personnel and employment. I don't remember the number.
Ninety-one, A, three, two, A.
Perfect, thank you.
And we'll see everybody tomorrow.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, please come and show.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we will immediately adjourn, uh, the public meeting once this is done, so there will not be a resume of the stream or video.